Roll call.
Certainly, we'll start with Mr. Williams.
President.
Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Mr. Moushak?
Here.
Mr. Pachus? Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Schumann?
Here.
Give six.
Six. I count seven. My math off? Yes, my math is off. Okay.
You didn't call the person?
Um.
You're seven, sorry.
Okay, and as others come on, we'll we'll introduce them. First order of business is review and action on applications. Twenty twenty-two, D O five S B. Merritt Station, Norwalk LLC. One twenty-nine Glover Avenue. LLC, one thirty-five Glover Avenue. LLC. Fifty, one fifty-six Glover Avenue LLC, two oh one Glover Avenue LLC. Building and Land Technology, North Seven, sixty-seven, sixty-nine. Seventy-nine, eighty-seven. One hundred eleven, one hundred seventeen. One hundred twenty-nine, one hundred thirty-five. One hundred fifty-five, one hundred fifty-six. And two oh one Glover and two Oakwood Avenue. Special permit application for an executive office. Development Park, which includes approximately thirteen hundred dwelling units and plus or minus fifty thousand square feet of retail within seven buildings. Ranging from five to fifteen stories. As you recall. We held a public hearing on this at our last meeting. This evening. It's anticipated that we either vote this item up or or down. Is there a motion? From one of the commissioners? Regarding which way to proceed?
A motion to approve.
Move forward. Move forward.
Nick, Nick made a motion to approve, Steve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Ah, I see that Commissioner Wells has joined us. We now have eight members on board. Steve, can you blow that up just a little bit larger?
Mr. Schumann, JJ is here as well, so you have.
Okay. Welcome, JJ. All alternates can have complete participation this evening. We have two commission members who could not make it. That frees up the three spaces. We welcome your your participation. What I'm proposing we do is, given the importance of this request. And given the number of conditions attached to it. That we go over it, condition by condition. And we can then vote on the matter. Steve, I'm not sure how important it is to go over the whereas's. I don't think we need to read them. But you have them up on the screen. We can read them to ourselves.
Correct, and those were, and they are pretty similar to what was voted on for the text amendment and the map amendment, so they are kind of a regurgitation of that.
Right. We did hear the presentation and held the public hearing on this the last meeting. To the best of my knowledge, all of the commissioners who were present with us this evening were at that last meeting, including Commissioner Ferguson, who had been out for a number of meetings before that due to an automobile injury. All right, I'm following on on my own notes, because I have some some notes on these items. I had questions on the red sections, item two and three. Steve, can can we see both of them since they're similar? Okay. All right, certificate of zoning compliance for phase two of the master plan shall not be obtained, no units occupied in this phase until all the improvements proposed by conduct for the Merritt Parkway Route seven interchanges, including the replacement of the Glover Glover Avenue Bridge and all associated improvements have been completed. I have no problem with the language, but I do have a question about the language. And that is, I'm sorry, I've got a and that is my concern about the possibility. I'm not suggesting that this will happen. But again, this is an important project. The possibility that the developer goes forward and takes takes these phase two and phase three, for that matter, to completion. And then has completed but empty hulks standing there waiting for these improvements to be completed by the state. It seems to me that that puts an enormous amount of pressure on the commission to go ahead without those state plans being completely implemented. And approve these projects so that residents can move in. I wonder if any of the other commission members share that concern.
I honestly don't. Lou, on Mrs. Nick speaking, I don't know what others think, but I think we have to trust the fortitude of the commission on that and adhering to what we're putting in writing here. And if the applicant wants to go ahead and build before, like that's their their own cost there to a degree.
Yeah, I I absolutely agree with Nick. I don't see this as a problem. The the applicant has so much to lose from doing that that I think it would be really unwise for them to go ahead and build those buildings and have them standing there empty. And take the risk that the commission won't modify what we've already passed. You know, I I really can't see that happening, Lou. I don't think that's a reasonable problem.
Well, you know, I would agree with you if we're talking about this commission. I have no idea what the administration of this city or the makeup of this commission is going to look like in another five, six, eight years.
No, but nobody can determine the future, Lou. I mean, you can't say we have to now provide for if we have a commission that isn't really very good in the future and doesn't stand by what we've done. Or if the commission in the eight years of the future, when half of us will be moved away or dead and buried. You know, I mean, it's I I don't see that as as a as a problem. I think we put it in and we rely on the good sense of the applicant and the and
Also, keep in mind, Galen and and Nick that it may or may not be this applicant. This project could be sold to someone else.
Well, that's true, but whoever does it would be, you know, they're all not lunatics. You know, to to go to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars building a building, taking the bet that you can intimidate the commission because the buildings are empty. The commission has nothing to lose. The it's whoever owns those buildings and spends all that money constructing them or purchasing them that has something to lose in this situation.
Well, I I disagree with you, but this is not my decision alone. This is the decision of the entire commission. I I would like to hear from the other commissioners. And if you don't agree with my position, then we will adopt the existing language.
I, Mike Moushak here. I I understood the applicants accepted this risk and accepted these conditions without objection, so I I don't see an issue here.
Okay, let me just double check on that, because I know there are some conditions here that they they have objected to. Steve, was was this acceptable language to BLT?
Yeah, the all the conditions, I mean, in the design manual, there's still some language we've gone back and forth with about the solar. But within the conditions themselves, these are acceptable, as far as I understand it.
Okay, Tammy, you wanted to speak?
Sure, thank you, Lou. I I have concerns that I mean, certainly BLT is right now, they're the owner, taking the financial risk. But if the state doesn't cooperate and create the improvements in the roadways. I mean, then it's it's a risk on both sides, because then the city could ostensibly be having these empty buildings, which isn't great. And then I mean, on the other hand, that that's the risk for BLT, but I don't know how well the state works in coordination with these projects. I mean, look at the interchange there at Merritt Seven. You know, on the Merritt Parkway, how many years has that been stalled because either people couldn't agree, there were neighborhood groups that were involved, and you know, they have every right to do that. So I share some of your concern, Lou. And I do think, though, that, yeah, financially, it's the big risk for for BLT. The buildings get created and they're not occupied. They still are going to be paying tax to the city. But what a horrible thing if they build this big thing and then nobody moves in. So I I hear your concern.
Anyone else?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
I presume that BLT isn't going to start building these buildings for phase two and phase three until there's a really actual realistic. I mean, they're not just going to go build them, build it, and they will they will construct. You know, they're they don't start to build on a wild hope that that this will be completed. So I I I don't think that's likely to happen, Tammy, that they will get these buildings completely constructed, assuming that it'll go through without some pretty good knowledge that it is going through. The interchange was never actually agreed on, and you know, it was stalled before. It's never been the construction's never been started. You know, I I wouldn't imagine that BLT would start building these buildings and take all that financial risk until constructions not only approved but underway.
But the state
I, and this is JJ. I I also feel that it's an incentive for the developer to really push and get these things completed according to the demands of phase two and phase three.
Oh, I don't, I certainly don't disagree with that. What what if we were to put in language indicating that they can't begin construction before these conduct projects are at least in the ground? That they, you know, that they begin?
I mean, is is the funding already available from the DOT?
No, it's not.
Okay, since so so that's something that we can lean on.
I'm not sure I follow you, JJ.
Okay, so according to the parameters of of phase two and phase three, you want the Route seven interchange from Merritt Parkway, and you also want the replacement of the Glover Avenue Bridge. Both of those projects fall under the jurisdiction of DOT, does it not?
That's correct.
Okay, and so if the developer wants these buildings occupied and know that these are the requirements, they're both tied in together in order to make it happen. What we what if we vote yes? You know, it's 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 a it's an incentive for them to complete. If we vote no, they lose.
All right, I I I hear you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, well, I, it seems pretty clear that the commission prefers the language as as it's been proposed. So let's move on. We, I, no value in beating a dead horse.
Sorry. I apologize.
Okay, number of, number seven. Number of stories proposed for each building should not exceed the number of stories indicated on the master plan. Compilation plan unless otherwise authorized within the North Seven Design Standards dated July seventh, twenty twenty-two. I don't think there's any need to discuss this further. I think we should talk about it with regard to the design standards. I know some people don't care if the buildings are seventeen stories high. I do, but it seems to me that's a discussion regarding the design standards.
Lou?
Yeah.
What if, in the meantime, since this is a long-term building project, what happens if the city master plan changes and people decide they only want ten-story buildings?
They, BLT still has the right to bill the buildings as as high as we have approved.
At this current time, it has to be as of this July seventh, twenty twenty-two date.
That's correct.
If you took that out, would that remove that stipulation? Like, let's say that date wasn't in there and the P O C D was changed to ten stories.
You may remember that I brought this this question up some time ago. And BLT made it absolutely clear that that was unacceptable to them. That retroactively changing the requirements was not acceptable. So it's not that we can't do it. But I don't think we have a deal if we try to do it. Steve, does that sound about right to you?
Yeah, so making an assumption that you vote positively on the the special permit, which is the master plan component of the application, that there's certain documents that then get filed in the land record. So that's what the project would be bound to going forward. So even if you change the zoning, I think that they're still eligible for that master plan, because that's a filed application on the land records, and it's got the grandfather rights at that point. I mean, they they could come back and seek to amend it higher or lower, whatever they felt was appropriate down the road. But I think they would have, you know, with this approval, they they have the rights vested within that plan.
Okay.
I have a comment on this.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike. Yeah, they explained that their financing model would be based on the master plan and, you know, that any change to that, obviously, after approval would jeopardize that and you know, remind the commission that the Norwalk, it has more Fortune five hundred companies right now than any other city in Connecticut. I believe that's the fact that I read in the paper.
I think I think Stanford has more.
Well, either way, we're close, if not top. So the idea that we could attract even more in this whole development model in because of all the evidence presented in previous meetings in terms of this is what large corporations are looking for. Granted, the pandemic has changed work patterns. But still the potential for drawing a Google or you know, Amazon, or even, you know, any large tech company or Fortune five hundred company is is the goal of the applicant and the goal of this kind of live-work situation that we're creating around the transit. And so that's why entertain reducing the scale of this later on, I think. Again, it's in a valley. It's at the bottom of the valley. A river valley surrounded by tall hills that these buildings would not exceed any come anywhere near exceeding. You can see that in drone photos or any any you know, aerial views of this area with existing buildings. And they're not going to exceed the height from the ground level of these existing buildings that are there. So anyway, we've talked about this ad nauseam, I think, in terms of this height, and I think at this point in time we should move on.
Thank you, Mike.
I I agree. I have one other thing, too, is the master plan. When the master plan is changed, it obviously doesn't change things that already exist. You know, the master plan can't go back and say, well, fifty Wall Street is way too big. We don't want a bit building that big, so you have to take two stories off. It's the same thing when you have an approved prep plan. You know, any change to the master plan is changed for things approved and built going forward. So I don't think it's a real concern that they might have a master plan where they don't want buildings this tall. I don't think that's a I don't think that's a realistic concern.
And don't forget, we also, sorry to interject, but it's really important to remember that we have site plan review of every building that comes forward. They have to be on this. So this is not approving buildings and then just standing back and waiting to see what happens and what they do. You know, we're going to maintain control. Staff has has maintained that pretty much at every meeting. And I think that's an important point to bring up at this point, that we are by voting tonight, we are not giving up the control of the city to still have a say in what happens here.
Let me draw your attention to item eleven. This may simply be a case of my, whoa, you just went past it, Steve. There you go. My advancing age. I seemed to recollect, and and it's certainly possible that I'm wrong here, that the town square was going to be twenty thousand square feet, not ten thousand square feet. Does anyone else have the same recollection? Or am I just going batty?
I think the example they gave us was the one in New Haven that was also ten thousand. So I thought we netted out at ten thousand. But Steve, do you remember that more clearly?
I know we talked about trying to make it as large as possible, but all my notes pointed back to ten thousand.
Okay, that's fine. Let's move on then.
Four sixteen, do we need the proposed size of Raccoon Park in here? Is that handled via the design guidelines?
Later on, it said two acres. Did it not?
I'm not sure. I was just reading sixteen again. I don't, and then I think eighteen brings it back up again, and I don't see anywhere else. But
Yeah, nineteen.
Nineteen.
Oh, there we go, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 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 in in conversation with the applicant on this, they can't say exactly how large it'll be until they know the final building layout and design.
Totally, totally, totally.
Particularly the roadway design, because that's going to impact where the park is.
Right. All right. I don't know about anybody else's notes. My next comment is on twenty-five. We're right there. Each development submitted as part of each phase of the project may also be subject to outside traffic peer review. I think I'm more comfortable saying it shall be subject. That offers the city a little more protection. Indicating that there'll be an independent review of traffic at the other phases.
And is it clear that each development means each building, not each phase?
No, we're talking here about specifically about the phases.
So we're saying for phase two, there'll be a tap traffic review, not when they put in building two dot one and then go ahead and put in building two dot two?
Right, right. Is everyone comfortable with that language?
So this this is mandated for each phase?
Exactly.
And
Since since traffic was the major issue.
Right.
Traffic and height were the two major issues that were brought up. This should or may make people, I can't say it shall make people more comfortable, but it may make people more comfortable.
Okay, so why aren't we using Xiao?
I, that's what I'm suggesting, that we do use.
I I I support Xiao.
I do, too.
Okay. So let's make that change.
I'll make it as soon as word. Let's but word is not letting me, so I got a mental note condition.
I think because you're in your P D on Adobe.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay, so that we will make that.
We'll trust you to do that. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven replaces twenty-six, just twenty-six is the old one, just so you know.
Right. I, the the there's nothing here that makes it clear that if they can't get a grant for this, if they can't get money from the state, if they can't get federal funds, then they need to pay for it. As long as the state approves it, they're obligated to have it done as part of the first phase.
So does a bike lane fall under the purview of the state?
Maybe it's on a state road.
It would. But what we're, basically, what we're what we're talking about is a sidewalk that will connect Glover and Main Avenue.
What, okay, what about the I'm sorry, I was thinking about something else. Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, this this just seems like something I frankly, I don't, it it should have occurred to us with the first three apartment buildings they put in to have insisted on this. It simply is not safe for people to to move on this side of
Right. A hundred percent.
Yeah.
I can see why this, I can see why this language emerged for phase two and phase three as they do terminate on Grist on Grist Mill Road. So I could see as you get closer to that interchange, why this extra language is mandated. This required.
Right, and this this is something that is done as part of phase one, not phase two, not phase three.
Okay.
When that first building goes in, as long as conduct approves of it, they are obligated to see that this gets done. And I, what I don't want to see is then come back to us and say, well, we couldn't get anybody to fund it. So we can't do it. Basically, we're talking about, if I remember correctly, the number Basically, we're talking about, if I remember correctly, the numbers we got from T N P were something like half a million. Or six hundred thousand dollars to accomplish this. Which, given the scale of the project, even phase one. Is not unreasonable in my view.
Lou, couldn't you make a condition of the C O that's being built? In the same way that the other conditions are?
Well, I would love to do that, but given that it's under Condot's control. We can't mandate that Condot Condot approve it. I mean.
The issue here is applicant may are okay to pay, Condot isn't. Proving it in a timely fashion, building gets built, everything else met. What do we do? No sidewalk built?
You know, it's it's not impossible that that happens. Do you have a suggestion as to what kind of language? We might, we might put in. I mean, we're being told by T N P that. There is space to accomplish this. I don't see a reasonable excuse for Condot not approving it. But stranger things have happened.
I mean, should we apply the same logic we have with the other improvements to this one? But maybe there's a reason not to.
Doesn't this also go back to the C O?
I would maybe. I mean, if I heard what you're. Stating correctly, maybe the language is modified to say something prior to. Submittal of the. Prior to the submittal of the first phase application to the commission. The applicant shall submit an application to Connecticut Department of Transportation to do that, and then. Upon approval from Connecticut to T O T, the applicant shall install. You know, do all the work. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me, and I I have no problem with that.
That makes sense, but you could still be in the situation where. Building that is built. Sidewalk is still waiting on approval from Condot to be built. Is that right, Steve? And is there anything we can do to prevent that situation? But that seems to be the.
No, the problem is you're, you you've hinged the the the. You know, the the difference between this contingency and the phase two and phase three construction contingency. Is you know that the merit seven Glover Avenue Bridge is an actual project that the state. Has on the books and is proposed to start construction in a couple of years. So you know, there's, that's a project, the. You know, B L T is taking a risk as well already with phase three, because. While they the state understands that the Glover Avenue Grist Mill Route Seven interchange work is important and needs to get done, it's not a project yet, so. Phase three is not a reality until that becomes a project and gets implemented by D O T. Whereas this is something as well, it's still. D O T could, for some reason, say no, we have no control over D O T saying yes on this, so it's. I think you've got to have the language a little bit loose enough to say that. They've got to submit the application to the D O to D O T at a certain time. And if D O T approves it, then they need to construct it. So the question is. You know, do you say they've got to construct it when? I I don't know if I have a good feeling on that piece.
That seems to make sense. Steve.
Yeah, I think we can put the language together to to get that.
Steve.
Should we? Oh, go ahead.
We can we ask T N P how long it should take to do this job? And then. Add that timeframe. Plus those months when you can't do construction. As well as time for design. And come up with a period, you know, that, for example, within one year after approval by Condot. To move forward, this project should be completed or must be completed.
Okay.
And we'll we'll rely on you to work that the timing out with T N P.
Lou, is there anything you'd want to add here about? A re-submission or a re-attempted, for whatever reason, conduct says no the first time around?
Steve. Would it be inappropriate to for the city to have some involvement in the application process? So that we can help to oversee things as Nick is suggesting?
Yeah, well, we would definitely have involvement if it comes to fruition. One thing I was thinking, which in prior conversations I've had with D O T. You know, back during the beginning stages of this process was once, whatever, assuming you take positive action on the application, I was going to forward. The approval up to D O T, so they're aware that, you know, there's been local approval of this project.
Right.
And at that time, I can specifically mention the sidewalk to them that we'd like to see done and. You know, see what the steps are on their end to to get that going, at least that, at least that's in the hopper for them. It won't be something new that they're not aware of.
Okay. Nick, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, my only concern is if we want. If for whatever reason, D O T says no, is it moot point forever? Or do we want to say? You know, okay, the first attempt didn't work, but. The applicant should try a second time. Maybe that's a silly concept, but.
No, no, I think you're you're absolutely right, and that's a point at which the city can assist. And bring bring in some of the heavy guns, the mayor, maybe Bob Duff or other legislators. To work work with D O T to point out the wisdom of their approving this project.
Makes sense.
Okay, Steve?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, should we move on?
And I think thirty one is the last. Change from what you've seen, and that's the condition copied over from the last couple of approvals that was Mr. Cantor agrees.
Right.
May I say something?
You go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mike. Just for the record, I have to revisit. Something I said earlier, which I had just read, it's May twenty ninth in the Norwalk hour or Hurst newspapers. Among the state's municipalities, sixth most populous Norwalk is the home of the most Fortune 500 headquarters with four. That would be Booking Holdings. EMCOR, Xerox, and Frontier. So we have more Fortune 500 companies than any other city in Connecticut. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. No need to dispute it.
Okay. Should we take a quick? Look at the design standards? Do you have access to those, Steve? I'm not sure. That we've missed anything in here. Has the language been updated regarding the roofs?
Let me show you that what I had sent you in my email. That one may take a second to find. Is that can, do you need me to blow that up or is that?
Yeah, would you please?
Took me a second to find how to blow this up last time, so there it is.
Okay.
Everything's different on the screen.
Okay, that's better.
So there were two. Two changes. The first one deals with the. The the way built the building massing is addressed. Bob in conjunction, Bob Griswatz in conjunction with the applicant and the applicant's. Consultants had come up with two different alternative ways to do that. And one of the alternative ways allowed for additional stories to be built and. That that came, I think there was a little concern raised that we didn't want to allow anything above fifteen stories, so that's why. The last sentence for each of those was added, so it's that. However, the total number of stories shall not exceed fifteen. So that's that's the only change regarding that.
Okay, so it's the the. Shorter buildings that are potentially impacted by this.
Right, gives them a little more flexibility.
Right.
And the other one, which has been a. Small bone of contention between myself and the applicant. Talking about the minimum area of the roof, which should be dedicated to solar. The last draft that you saw had fifteen percent. I think there was discussions about going up higher than that. We had proposed language in red, which the applicant, you know, had discussions with, they are not. Thrilled with. To be honest with you, I'm not quite sure. Why, but they, you know, they have their reasons, they think it ties their hands a little bit. I think they're willing to come up from the fifteen. I don't think they're willing to go to thirty, that was suggested, but I think they would come up from the fifteen. So I think that's really. Your call at the end of the day, how you want to proceed. We've given you a couple of different options if you're, let us know which one you feel is. You know, the best approach.
I like staff suggestion, but I don't know what others think.
What's that? What's that?
I said, I like what staff has recommended here.
Well. Why not increase that fifteen percent? Why not?
That's what you're saying at the minimum.
Yeah. Why not increase it to twenty or even twenty five?
I the only thing I'd say is the way we drafted this is, I think, when you get to the. When they submit an actual application, obviously, they'll have their roof plan as part of the proposal, then we could take a look at and say, well, why is? Why did you do it this way? Why can't you? Modify this and then get more of the area for solar. So I think that that would be the the approach this language follows.
Well, why can't we do both? Why can't we increase the minimum to twenty? And still look at it as part of their. Application, and if we think it's. Justified, ask them to increase it further.
Steve, I know you sent us some, we've. Received some information on solar and its effectiveness and whatnot, but I don't remember reading anything about. A certain coverage to be more effective or less effective than ostensibly, if you make a whole roof, solar panels a hundred percent. That would be, you know, a seventy five percent improvement over one that's only twenty five percent, but is there some ratio? That might be helpful here rather than kind of randomly increasing it. Lou, I I like your idea of piecing. The roofs and making them more green in whatever way it is, whether it's solar or grass or roof garden. Whatever, but is there some standard out there?
That's an excellent question, and that's another point the applicant raised in discussions. It's a little bit, and that's part of the issue, you know, we've struggled with internally with the. Change to the state regulations where it gives you some authority to require this, but it doesn't really say what you can require and. And the literature out there on the benefits, I don't know if it's it's crystal clear, and and I don't think anybody on staff is. Expert enough to say that, so that's kind of, so there is a little bit of randomness to the numbers, to be honest.
I I was going to say, I I would agree with you on solar panels. But we're also giving them the option of a green or a blue roof. Which which offer their own benefits. They're not, we're not just saying that you must have. Fifteen or twenty percent has to be dedicated to solar panels. There are three, three different options.
Yeah, I I agree, and I think it's something we need to get a better grasp, and 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 if you really think about it. One of my points back was, well, all the, if you think about it, all these zoning standards are a little bit, you know, pulled out of thin air. What what's the difference between? One unit per five hundred square feet or one unit per four hundred and fifty square feet?
I think twenty twenty percent is an easier number to compute than fifteen percent. I would say, let's say twenty percent. Well, look, we we can do this. Let's just say twenty percent. I I'm okay, I'm okay with that, Lou.
I mean, we're. We're often.
We're pushing this on all projects. Nick has been obviously the big proponent or advocate of this, but we, I think. I think we can change that, and there's not going to. Be a lot of screaming going on, and if anything, it should be applauded.
I mean, I think on a lot of these things, we've been behind the curve and. It 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 doesn't hurt to push a little bit, so. I would agree with my.
Add the add the five percent, make it twenty percent.
Right. Without admitting that we have any problem with fractions or decimals.
Oh, right.
That's the only changes on the design manual, unless you wanted me to pull it back up and go over anything.
No, the only other question I had has already been addressed, and that. That related to the addition of. One or two floors to the building. All right, so we have before us. A document. That appears. To be acceptable. To the members of the commission. We. We've had a motion to approve, we've had it seconded. Are we all comfortable in moving to a vote on this important project?
Yes.
All right, then, Steve, let's do a roll call on this.
Sure, and you're voting on the resolution and with the. Whereas clauses as proposed, correct?
Exactly.
With the modifications we went through tonight.
Exactly.
All right, let's see, I'm making sure I can see, I just, I'm not gonna, since I don't see, I'm gonna call you first, Mr. Williams. Oh, he might have a jump off, so maybe we lost Mr. Williams. So Ms. Jordan Byron.
Approved.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Patches?
Yes, approved.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
I'm conflicted and I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
Happily approved.
Mr. Mouschek?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
So that was one, two, three, four, I can't count, five, six, seven, approve, one abstention.
Um, did you call Hector?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. He had to drop off to another meeting, so that's why he.
Oh, do we need his vote?
No, no, you're fine.
No, yeah. All right, well, thank you all. I mean, this has been for us. Over two years of discussion, negotiation. It's been, it's been a long haul, and I thank you all for. Adding your wisdom to. This final resolution. Next item, twenty twenty two dash twenty seven, Cam, William and Gillian Graves, fifty two. Samus Street. Construction of new single family residence. Steve, you want to fill us in on this?
Sure, and I believe the applicant is here.
Okay.
Rather, they're definitely going to be more knowledgeable about the project, and I can fill you in if you have any questions about the staff memo, I'm happy to dive into those.
Yeah, that's great, Commission members. My name is Dan Conlin, I'm the architect for the project, and I can. Kind of briefly walk you through what we're proposing here. I don't know, Steve, if you could put up. I don't know, Steve, if you could put up just one of the site plans, probably the engineering plan has the most data.
Yeah, give me a second and I'll get that. If you want to just keep, start going.
Yeah, I'll just get started. So so basically, the subject of this application is the fifty-two Samus Street. It's a property within the CAM zone. It fronts Farm Creek to the south, just west of Bluff Avenue. It's about a four-tenth of an acre parcel in a Residence A Zone. And we're in an AE fifteen flood zone. We're proposing to demolish the existing structure and construct a new home and swimming pool. All of our proposals conform with applicable zoning regulations, including height, coverage setbacks, and flood damage prevention measures, including the elevation, flood vents, et cetera. We're going to be elevating the first floor of the building to elevation seventeen, so that the bottom of our lowest floor will be a foot above the base flood elevation and providing foundation vents. The property is currently served by City Water and City Sewer and will continue to be. Our proposal does include a building that that is larger than what's there, so there'd be an increase in coverage. And we've designed a stormwater infiltration system to handle the incremental runoff. We have submitted calculations demonstrating that the system will reduce runoff from the property from the existing conditions in in all storm events from a two-year to a hundred-year storm. There's going to be no change in the existing grading patterns or drainage patterns on the property. It it grades gently from north to south, so towards Farm Creek, that will continue to be the case. We have received approvals from Harbor Management Health, SNEW Water Department, and Eversource. We submitted documents to both the Water Pollution Control Authority and DPW. They received, we received some comments back from them, which we have addressed, but we don't at this point have their final sign off because the plan reviewer is on vacation, returning next week. But we anticipate that the questions were of a technical nature. We believe we've addressed them and anticipate approval on that next week. We received comments from Connecticut DEEP as well, which we can address. But basically, their their concerns were that the building meet all applicable FEMA regulations, which we do. They had made a request that we consider relocating the stormwater infiltrators to the north side of the property. And we're gonna say that's not feasible or advisable, frankly. We have a lot of utilities that come in buried in the front yard, so we have buried water, sewer, and and electrical connections, along with a propane tank is going to be buried in there, so we just simply don't have room for the infiltrators in the front. And in this design as well, they're, you know, sort of down gradient of the house, so we think they're in the proper in the proper location. DEEP was also concerned about the maintaining sediment erosion controls, which we agree with and intend to do. So our site plan shows the property bounded with silt fence on all three sides, and we have an anti-tracking pad where we come in from the street. They also commented about tidal wetlands and a delineation of the existing tidal wetlands, which does not appear on our drawings. We're willing to do that as a condition of approval. And and they referenced the installation or the desire to have a vegetative buffer installed. And we are also willing to do that. And in fact, a vegetative buffer exists on the site right now, so it would be more of a matter of enhancing what's there than starting from scratch. So where the backyard, the lawn meets the tidal wetlands, there's already a buffer zone that's been planted by the owners with with salt-resistant plants, with native plants that are appropriate for that use. So so if the commission saw fit to make a condition of approval that we enhance that wetland buffer, we'd be happy to do that. Just relative to the CAM issues, your, the coastal resource map identified a tidal wetlands and intertidal flats as being the coastal resources. We don't anticipate any adverse impacts on either of those from our work. And in terms of just consistency with coastal policies, our project meets the zoning regulations, flood damage prevention regulations, best management practices of Norwalk DPW for stormwater management. And so that we also conclude on that count that there'd be no, no adverse impacts. So we think it's consistent with all of the state and local goals and regulations. And with that, I'll take your questions.
Mr. Conlin, I I think that we would very much like to see the vegetative buffer enhanced behind the house. And I would recommend to the commission that we make that a condition of the approval. Steve, is this a site plan review?
CAM site plan, correct.
Okay, okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Can I see an artist's retention of what the finished product looks like, or should look like?
Sure. Steve, if you can bring up the architectural plans, the cover sheet has a couple renderings on there.
Thank you.
So there it is.
Can I see the back view, please?
Sure, I have. If we scroll down on the elevations, actually, you're looking at at the front and the rear. So the right, the right is the building viewed from the south, so that's what faces the water.
Right.
Running to the left is what faces Samus Street.
Okay, and the vegetation is right before the
The vegetation would be in front of those Adirondack stairs there.
Yeah.
And if you go back to the site plan, there's a coastal jurisdiction line, and we went out and took some photos and looked at the vegetation after we received the DEP comments. And we think that the edge of the wetlands is just about where that CJL, the coastal jurisdiction line is. So our wetland buffer would be our landward of that. So so it would be a vegetative buffer just to the north of that coastal jurisdiction line.
What about a flood wall?
There is no wall existing or proposed. DEP does not like seawalls.
Thank you.
If I may, I'm not sure if this should be addressed to Mr. Conlin or Steve Kleppen, but because this is a CAM application, do we address sidewalks for new construction?
Uh, that's a good question. It's a single-family dwelling, so I don't the the ability to regulate that for this application, I'm not sure if it's a good question. We've had that conversation internally several times now on different projects, and I don't know about the authority on this scale of project to require that. It's a good question, though. I'm not positive.
Tammy, on that side of the street, there is no sidewalk.
I know. And there's no sidewalk on either side of the street, and we've had this conversation. We used to have it in the planning commission all the time. When if somebody's building a new construction, and if it was a subdivision, then yes, a sidewalk was required, and the argument frequently was made, oh, well, there's no other connecting sidewalks, so we shouldn't put them. But with the frequency of houses being torn down and rebuilt, and it's a busy pedestrian way, perhaps we want to consider requiring a sidewalk, or at least have the conversation.
Yeah, my
It's a sidewalk to nowhere for sure, but it might be temporary sidewalk to nowhere. It's, you know, for pedestrian safety.
My, my, the conversations I've had with TMP and DPW and Law Department has been you know, the DPW looks to get them in when there's existing sidewalk network on the single-family dwellings. I think TMP would like to do that more often. I, my guess is my conversation with legal, I don't know what our authority is on this particular type of application to require that. I don't, I don't know if it's like, if this was a multi-family development, a full-blown site plan application, I think you have a lot more power to require that. But a single-family CAM application is a different scale.
Steve, we can't, we can't do anything about that issue here tonight, but could you get us more information so that next time Tammy asks this question, we have an answer, a firm answer as to whether we have the authority to do that?
Yep, we can do that.
Uh, Mr. Conlin, you, you you mentioned it only very briefly, and that that is the 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 issue of discharging onto the street. You indicated there, there there's a propane tank, and there are the services coming in through the front of the building. To what extent does that make it impossible to to use the front?
Well, if you look at the the site plan and look at the scale of the infiltrators, and and you look at that rectangle, and then compare it to the available space of the front yard, recognizing that we have a propane tank that's eighteen feet long, that has separation distances from the building. You have buried power lines, water lines, and sewer lines with required separation distances between them. It just physically won't go there.
Couldn't the propane go, the propane tank's going to be smaller than the infiltrators, right?
Yes, it is. It is.
Couldn't you flip those?
I could, but I still wouldn't have room in the front yard.
I don't, it seems like, I mean, I could, I don't have a paper copy, but it looks eyeballing. It looks like there's plenty of room to put those in, even if you go under the driveway.
Yeah, and I I just think if you look at, for instance, our sewer lateral that that comes out of the building is I'm going to say about twelve or fourteen feet from the westerly property line there. So that sort of takes that space away. The propane tank needs to be ten feet from the property line and ten feet from the building. So there are setbacks required there. We could certainly run the power lines under the driveway. The the existing water service, I suppose, could be relocated, but it goes in more or less in the middle of the building. So it's a lot of stuff to put in there, and I'm not sure. I know Wayne was trying to join us, our project engineer. But he also felt pretty strongly that it made more sense for this to discharge towards the water, that the overall watershed of this property moves north to south. And that moving stormwater to the north and retaining it in between the building and the point of discharge didn't make much sense to him from an engineering point of view.
I mean, I, I'm obviously, I'm not an engineer, but I think the overflow could still accomplish that with, you know, re- rethinking of the system.
You know, we're if we can physically fit it in the front, I wouldn't say that that we're opposed to it. We think that this design is better, and I'm not sure what the objection is to it from an environmental point of view. It's rainwater that's going in there. And I understand the distance to the coastal jurisdiction line is considerably closer. But that's really more of a construction issue with SNE controls as opposed to a, an ongoing issue with the operation of the system. So we kind of feel like that's the best design. If if you wanted us to to try to squeeze it in the front, we we could give it a shot, but I I just don't feel like it works there.
I'm moving Wayne over. He was in as an attendee, so he should be allowed to pop over.
Can we leave this an open question, Steve, to have the staff work out with Mr. Conlin?
Sure, yeah, we could. We could probably have a conversation between the applicant and DPW to
Okay.
look at it a little more closely. Wait, the engineer has his hand raised.
Hello, Wayne Davanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. Yes, regarding the storm, the stormwater retention, placing it in the front is not a really advisable. You're concentrating all the runoff, and it's a lot of runoff from the roof, and putting it in, you know, you concentrate it into the retention, which will then percolate into the ground, and it's going to flow, you know, to the natural grade, it's downgrade, which places the foundation between it and where it's going. It's not so much the discharge or the overflow, it's it's the sort of subterranean flow that is the concern, and it's going to place it's going to bring the water ultimately right back into the foundation, and that's detrimental to the foundation, and and really impedes particularly that foundation will impede its flow to where it really needs to go. And also, again, physically, there isn't the room there, particularly with the utilities, the particularly the sanitary sewer and the water service, not even really accounting for the propane tank. You know, for those reasons, there is also no soil testing done there, because it just wasn't a practical candidate for where we would place the retention. There is no guarantee. We would, we got really favorable results in the rear. There's no guarantee we would get that in a soil test in the front. And if we don't, that would actually make it could very well make the the retention even larger. We'd have to go to lower-profile chambers, which would actually make the footprint even larger. And it it's and if you do look at that site plan, it's it's almost, you know, it's just doesn't fit well, and it could end up needing to be bigger. So I, you know, I don't think it's really a practical location.
I have a question for Wayne. Please hide. If we were to require a sidewalk, which I don't think there's anything stopping us from doing that, and it would be pitched into the street usually, that doesn't change any of the calculations for impervious surface. Because it's actually not on the property. It's would be on the city property. Is that correct?
That's correct, right.
So I, you know, I don't think we need to hesitate on this. I think we should require a sidewalk and then let the cards fall where they may. I think it's a good idea to have a refuge. God knows we want, you know, we all see this in Rowayton especially, but other parts of town, but people pushing babies, baby carriages down the street. And sometimes they have to jump out of the way or jump off the street. And just to have a refuge for that I was anticipating connecting eventually to a network is smart. I support Tammy's question. I mean, I I think that's a good question. But I think we can just require it and and then see what happens. But I don't think that there would be anything to say we couldn't require require that on this application. I can't imagine why what, how the applicant could come back and say we we refuse to do this sidewalk in because we're protected by Regulation A saying we don't have to put sidewalks in. I don't think that exists. I guess that that caused some silence.
Mr. Conlin? Does the, does the applicant have any objection to installing the sidewalk?
You know, I'd have to confer with my client. I I actually think it's a pretty unusual request in my experience on a, on a single-family house. I've done an awful lot of CAM applications in a lot of jurisdictions, including Norwalk. And this issue's never come up before. So I'm a little surprised by it. I kind of understand the public policy issue relating to it, but if you want to have sidewalks in all of Rowayton, maybe that should be more of a city initiative in the city right away as opposed to having individual homeowners take on that burden. You know, we're not, we're not developers here. We're just homeowners. So that would be, that would be my response.
I, I, I'm not so much concerned about the burden on the, on the homeowner. That's a fairly modest expense, given what it's going to cost to put up this building. I'm a little more concerned about narrowing the street for the length of the property. Samus Street isn't all that wide, and all of a sudden, pushing it out six feet may be confusing to drivers. Again, if it were longer, I wouldn't feel that way. Again, if it were longer, uh, I wouldn't feel that way, uh, but for, for this single property, um, I do feel that way.
Oh, don't forget the property line is set back five or six feet from the, um, curb line.
Right, I understand that.
So there's no, there's no, there's no taking of street, uh, here. It would be set in on the right, the city right away.
I think it's a good compromise.
Well, we have a, um, you've seen, uh, the memo from, uh, uh, the staff. We also have a draft resolution. Why don't we start there? Is there a motion to approve, uh, the draft resolution?
Sorry, I'm Lou. Can I just ask one more question? And it's not about the sidewalk.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I don't see Wayne, and I didn't catch his last name, but, um, Mr. Engineer, if I may. What, what happens with these storm retention systems when there is, say, a hurricane and the water is completely covering the property? Um, I'm familiar with the area and I know that the creek really does fill up, so with, what happens, you know, in a situation like that? Does
Well.
Where does that water eventually go?
I mean, they're designed for up to a so-called hundred-year storm. I mean, if, if it's an extreme, a truly extreme event and the property is flooded. It, it, obviously it's not, it, I, it's a, it's a void. It's an empty capacity, so it would fill off. It'd be completely filled. It would, you know, mitigate to, to that extent, but, uh, you know, I mean, it's not designed for extreme, you know, hurricane storms. It, it's, it's, it's designed for up to a hundred-year storm, which is nine inches of rain in twenty-four hours. I believe it's what it's, the definition basically, so.
If it were half full, let's just say, and then there's a hurricane and the ground is completely covered and the rest fills up. It just eventually drains itself out.
Yeah, correct. Eventually it would, it would percolate out and, and drain down and, and empty, right?
Thank you.
All right, uh, back to the resolution. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Okay, Hector moves. There are second.
Second.
Um, I'm sorry, Mike, was that you?
Steve.
Oh, okay, Steve seconds. Um, let me note that Commissioner Rowena has, uh, joined us. All right, um, now, before we, uh, move on, uh, the resolution. Mike or Tammy, uh, you wish to change the, uh, resolution, uh, to include, uh, the sidewalk?
Yes, I, I would, uh, offer an amendment to, uh, add, uh, the requirement for a four-foot minimum sidewalk. Uh, that would be beyond the three-foot ADA size. And, uh, that would be, you know, kind of a compromise from a five-foot, which is the city standard, but, uh, four feet is a reasonable. And, uh, and also the vegetated buffer that, uh, you brought up earlier.
Okay.
So I think those two items, uh, uh, would be reasonable requests.
Uh, Steve, do we need to indicate that that sidewalk, um, uh, needs to be concrete?
Uh, that, probably, yeah. What material, I would say whatever materials city standard is for that area.
Okay.
The city does asphalt. The city does both. Has both requirements depending on the geography, but I would, I would just say, uh, a paved, a paved, uh, sidewalk and let DPW, uh, tell them what it should be.
Tammy, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, I would agree. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other changes in, uh, the resolution to approve? All right, if not, um, let's, uh, let's, uh, do this with, um, uh, a, uh, oh, sorry about that. Let's, let's do this with a roll call vote.
Hey, Ms. Wells.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Think I've heard enough to vote, but I probably should abstain, so I'll abstain.
Okay, Miss, I'm going to, everybody was moving around me quick, so I'm not sure. I want to make sure I get everybody. Uh, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Ushak?
Yes.
Mr. Patches, I apologize if I already asked you, but I'm going to ask again just in case.
Yes, yes, again.
Okay, Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Um, and I think last but not least, Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Did I get everybody? I apologize if I didn't.
Did you get Steve Ferguson?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion passes.
And you're going to love your sidewalk.
All right, let's.
It actually adds to property value to have a sidewalk in front of your house, believe it or not. It does.
We'll be the only one in the neighborhood.
You'll be a trend setter. Don't worry. It's not a negative. It's a positive thing.
Thank you, Tammy, for bringing that issue up. It's so important.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three R in the Norwalk Police Department Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Article eighty to allow for EMS communication antennas to be installed on existing public utility towers. This is a preliminary, uh, review. If we choose to move it, uh, forward, uh, we're going to have to hold a, uh, public hearing. Uh, and, uh, we have with us Lieutenant, uh, Terrence Blake or Blank. Was Blank earlier. He changed his name midway through with the meeting. Lieutenant?
Chairman and Commissioners, uh, good evening. Um, this is, uh, part of a, a long-term project that's been going on for several years. It is a full replacement of Norwalk's Emergency Communication System, uh, which is a capital project within the city. Part of the project's already been completed. It's a trans, it's, this is the second part of the project that's actually, uh, building out the new communication system for police, fire, emergency medical service, as well as, uh, Department of Public Works. Uh, the, the current system is at end of life and we are, you know, this is, again, it's a capital project. It's been the works for several years. We're getting to the, the, um, the end of the, uh, planning phase and moving on to the operational phase. And part of that is, is, you know, the, the build out of the system, uh, which includes in this particular, um, question, I guess we had with, with zoning is the use of the South Norwalk Electric Works Water Tower on which court to, uh, mount a antenna there, which would complete the system.
Lieutenant, can you explain, um, why, um, the antenna needs to go at that location?
Yeah, the Motorola Corporation, who was, uh, contracted by the city to, um, build out this system, did a full study of, uh, where in the city would be, uh, feasible to optimize the system and to have full coverage throughout the city. Uh, that area, the South Norwalk Rowayton area has always been a difficult area, excuse me, for coverage due to its, uh, its low, how low it is, um, and this particular location uh, will give us full coverage in that whole area as well as South Norwalk.
Is this the only, uh, antenna, uh, that services the system?
No, there's an antenna at the, there's an antenna in Wilton and there's also an antenna at the Norwalk Hospital.
Okay. Questions, questions for the lieutenant?
How big is the antenna?
I believe it is twenty-four feet tall.
But I would sit on top of the water tower that's already there?
That is correct.
And how tall is the water tower? Do we know, Steve?
I have no idea.
I, I can get you that. I don't have it in, in front of me, but it was on the plan. I thought it was forty-something feet, but I don't, I, I can send that out. It might be on the plan, uh, that was sent out, but while you're talking, I'll see if I can dig that out.
Lieutenant Blake, um, is the antenna big enough or wide enough to be a navigational aid for boaters on the sound? Now, I don't mean from a radio point of view, but a visual aid like the smoke stacks over in Huntington or the current Man Resa stack.
I, I don't believe it would rise to that, that height. Um, it's basically just, uh, the antenna is high enough to be able to actually connect, i.e. see the antenna at the hospital. That's, that's where the kind of height basis comes from, so I don't, I don't believe it'll be that tall.
Um, but it is, it, it's going on the top of the water tower, right?
Correct.
Yeah, you can see the water tower from the water. It might, I'm just wondering if.
Possibly.
Like it was, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Wh- what is the implication if, uh, we don't approve this?
Well, I, I'm, uh, currently there, yes, currently the issue is that there's nothing that is that tall in that area that allows us to utilize a tower of, of this height, uh, which is relatively minimal height, um, to make this system work. So, um, if it was denied, I guess we would have to go back to a, uh, Plan B, go back to Motorola. And perhaps conduct another study to determine, uh, another location or the feasibility of building a full-size tower at a substantial additional cost.
Thank you.
All right, one more question, if I may.
Sure.
What is the, uh, sort of the danger, if you will, of that antenna falling on any of the houses that are surrounding the property? So completely residential area. There's houses on all four sides of you.
Yeah, my understanding is the tower, that tower is secured to the water tower itself, so the, I, I don't believe, I mean, unless that water tower is to tip over through some natural disaster or otherwise, um, I don't think there'd be an issue at all, is what we've been told. Obviously, that's, that's certainly a concern for Motorola to ensure that that tower, uh, stays up not only for, uh, our communications issues. You know, they, they are fully aware of the fact that, you know, we have hurricanes and such and high winds here in, in this area of the, uh, of the world. Um, but they have these towers, they have similar towers, of course, all over the United States to include areas with tornadoes, so on and so forth. So I think they, they are certainly aware of that and the tower will be built to those specifications.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Mike.
I would just say that I can't argue with the need to improve public safety. Every, you know, everyone should have the assurance that if they call nine-one-one, they'll be able to get someone immediately, uh, you know, on their cell phone and then have the, uh, EMS be able to communicate with the police, et cetera. Isn't that what this issue is really? It's, it's a public safety issue, uh, more than anything. Is that correct?
Yes, this, this addresses those issues. I mean, obviously, like I said, our system is at end of life and this is a new system. Um, and it's been the works, it's been the planning stages for, I mean, well over five plus years. Um, so this is, you know, this is the plan, so to speak, and this will allow police, fire, EMS, Rowayton Fire Department as well, and our public works, uh, to all be communicating with each other, to work interoperably. Um, and also should the, the, the need arise to call in, uh, resources from outside, um, our city, um, several other agencies are utilizing a similar system, so they'd be able to talk to us and communicate with us as well.
I, I'm aware of a, a real quick story in New Canaan, someone I know that I was doing landscaping for donated some property, uh, to let the town build an antenna on their property because they knew someone in their neighborhood who died because they couldn't get, um, emergency call out. Uh, and so they went ahead and literally funded, actually funded this and donated it to New Canaan. It's up on Owen Oak Ridge.
Oh, wow.
Uh, and, but they, they were so shocked when they were told, we're sorry, you know, that this person died, but we couldn't communicate. And this guy couldn't believe it. Uh, and they said, well, you know, the neighbors always fought. Whenever we suggested an antenna, there was always pushback. And so this person went ahead and just had them build it right on their property as a, as a public, uh, service. I, I just thought I'd share that because how, it is a matter of life and death. I mean, it really is, uh, to, to, for the have emergency. First responders be able to communicate.
Steve, um, where do we have room on our, uh, rather full agenda for a public hearing for this?
Uh, we have them on the next available pending, um, notification to municipalities because it's in the A-zone that pretty much touches every bordering community, plus West Cog, we have to notify, so we've, we started that process. So we're going to get them on the next available, I can, I think we communicated with, um, Lieutenant Blake already, but we'll circle back. But I think it's in August, I think, your first August meeting, I think, but I'll confirm. So the first available opportunity to add them, they're on.
Okay, oh, why don't we just, um, um, move on this with a show of hands? Um, all those in favor of pushing this to a public hearing? Uh, any, uh, abstentions, any objections? All right, it's unanimous. We're all set. We'll, we'll see you in August.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, twenty twenty-one dash oh-six SPR. G and T Norwalk LLC ninety-three Winfield. Modification to SPR for change in exterior design. Report and recommend action. Attorney Blank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Adam Blank, uh, live here in Norwalk, the attorney for the applicant, G and T Norwalk LLC. Uh, which is the owner of ninety-three Winfield, which was what it came under and originally, I think it's now known as One Howard Avenue. Tom Belet, the developer, I believe is on the Zoom or was, uh, at least a minute ago. And I think we've also got Joe Kugno, the, uh, project architect is here with us. Uh, there's Tom now. He's the second Adam Blank on your screen. The, uh, so, so we're here tonight requesting, uh, that you find that there's a, a minor change for some, uh, a field changes related to the siding on the, on the townhouses that are, uh, presently going up at ninety-three Winfield. You previously approved eleven units, uh, at that site. That was that former Bank of America site, um, on that triangular corner. The approved plans, I'll share my screen. Can you see my screen?
And now, yes, now we can see it.
Okay, great. So I'm just showing you a part of the approved plans called for, um, vinyl siding. Which showed it as horizontal and vertical. Um, the horizontal was, um, spelled out in the approved plans as white. The vertical was not actually spelled out as any particular color. The, there were submitted with the application, but not part of the approval was a few renderings, which showed, admittedly showed the, the upper half being a different color. Again, that's not part of your approval, but it did, we, 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 that's what we showed you guys, um, when it was approved. Since that time, the, all of these units are for sale, um, uh, and it's going to be in the process of being created into a condominium. Those, uh, in, in the construction process, um, talking with the sort of the realtor and then working with the suppliers, uh, the owner decided to upgrade from the vinyl to hardy plank, which is like a, a cement product. Hopefully some of you are familiar with it. Um, there were some comments from neighbors who were, I think, opposed to this project from the beginning and, uh, remain opposed to the switch from vinyl to hardy plank, uh, suggesting that this was a way for the developer to cheap out. Party plank is a much, much more expensive product than what was originally approved by this commission and in, so this was the original and in the you rotate. So this is what's actually on site now. It, that's the hardy plank. It's white, um, entirely white, um, and it's entirely horizontal. So the change was from half horizontal and half vertical with potentially a, a, a different color up top to all horizontal. I think in the grand scheme of things, one, it's more expensive. We're not cheaping out on anything. It's also a much safer product. This is a, the, the hardy is fire-rated. The, the vinyl is not fire resistant, um, but, but be that as it may, we, we believe this is a very minor change. It, it also happens to be a change. That is arch, strictly architectural in nature. Um, and there's no architectural review here. And so. I, I get it arguably, the developer maybe should have spoken with staff before they made the change. Um, just to confirm that there was no issue on, with your staff on, on making that change. On the other hand. I, I, I'm not so sure that most people would think that. If they were to paint their house or if they were to change the siding on their house. That they would need anything other than to get a building permit, which, which has occurred. Um, and, and I think that's similar, like in saying for this, that if this isn't a minor change, you know, are you saying that on every one of your approved projects? That every time they go to repaint or every time they go to put siding on. That that has to come back in front of your commission? That never has happened. Um, and so. And, and this is of, I think, a very minor change, and I would. I would, in a, in a very respectful way. Suggest that if you were to look at any. Project that you've approved in the past, that's ten units or more, um, look at the curve, look, look at any project. On what the rendering showed and what was actually built. There's always going to be minor discrepancies. They're, they're not identical. And those almost never come back to you, even for a minor change consideration. The, the, they're just, they're approved based on the prior approval and the, the as-built will show any changes. And often they're more than architectural changes, but they're minor. Um, so we, we would hope that you'd, uh, deemed this to be a minor change. These units are, are for sale. They've had, uh, offers that have been accepted on, uh, every unit, um. And, but they can't go to contract and close on them until we can get the, um, the zoning CO. Um, which we're hoping to, to have occur in the very near future. Um, and so that the product is, has really, the market has liked it, it's reacted well by virtue of the fact that they're. Essentially all sold in that seven hundred thousand dollar range, um, so it's, it's a high-end product. This is not a, a cheap out. Um, whether the neighbors. Like some of the neighbors dislike the project, we, we get that, but, um. It can, fully complies with your regulations and this really is a, a, I think, a minor change, um. The, let me just see if there's anything in the, from the, some of the letters that came in, um. Oh, the, there, there was a few things in, in some letters that I assume you got saying that this is a, a negative for the neighborhood's character. Now, uh, look, we would dispute that. But even if you, even if you thought that this, that it being white or being horizontal siding was, was negative. Or you didn't like it as much, again, because there's no architectural review, how could that ever amount to a, a, a major change or something that would alter your decision on? Having approved this application in the first place? Um, I, I, I will say though, look, in, in the, in the, in an effort to sort of. Uh, try to compromise, um, I do have authority, so the. The existing. Uh, white has some like a sandstone, beiges garage doors and trim around the windows. Um, the applicant is willing to, at their expense and, um, and the hardy product doesn't need to be painted. But the, the pop-out versions. He's happy to paint those or willing, I should say, willing to paint those a beige color that will match the, the sand tone. Um, that will give you that two-tone look. Um, uh, we're, we're not willing to, to rip off the, the hardy plank siding and, and put new siding in vertically. Um, but, but would be willing to, on the pop-outs here. Um, to put them in as, as beige, if that's something that the commission liked. We prefer the all-white look, but, but are willing to do that. If you think that that would, if, if that, if that would be something that the commission would desire, um. That's my presentation, the, the architect and, and owner are here and can answer questions if you have questions for them or for me.
I have, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, I, I agree it's a minor change, uh. And. Uh, I want to say that I have an eighteen ninety-one Victorian. House in the, uh, historic district of Golden Hill. It's a state-designated historic district, and I chose hardy plank for an addition. Uh, to match the, uh, hundred-year-old cedar siding on my house because it was more durable and fire-rated. Uh, I never would have chose vinyl siding, uh, for that addition. So this is a better material. You don't need to, um, convince me. Uh, I also, with all due respect to the architect. Uh, the vertical version that was presented in the rendering, even though that was, you're saying that wasn't a, you know, part of the approval. I, I never liked that because, uh, that vertical, uh, board and batten is. Really reserved historically for barn buildings and outbuildings. And it's really just a gimmick used in the modern farmhouse look that's so popular. Uh, to create a kind of look of barns on, on a residential building. So I think the whole thing is a gimmick. To go vertical and especially to split it in the middle of a window and where, where it was shown originally. I prefer the more honest, clambered horizontal going to the roof. I think it looks better. And cleaner, it doesn't look like a modern farmhouse wannabe, uh, kind of thing. So, and I, and I know the architects here, but I'm just saying. I think the horizontal siding is an improvement. Uh, over what looks to me like an architectural gimmick. Uh, in the other version, and I would argue instead of, uh. Since the applicant has made an offer to, uh, do, do an appeasing action. I would, instead of the two-tone, which again is more of a gimmick, I think. I would argue for increasing the size of the trees, one grade, meaning one size up. Around the perimeter. It's not a lot of trees, but it's the river birch, the hawthorns, the pin oaks and the cedars go one size up. To, uh, because I think a lot of neighbors, uh, letters were responding to. The scale of the building, you know, it's a shock to them, obviously, when it was, uh. It, it's in the middle of being built, but they're not imagining all the landscape, uh, around the buildings. If, if the owner was able to increase the size of the trees, just one grade. I think that would, uh, be more instant gratification, uh, more coverage, make the buildings look more soft. Uh, uh, softer, uh, to the neighborhood. I, and that's, I'm just throwing that out there as something for the other commissioners to consider. Uh, and for the, uh, applicant to consider. Uh, instead of playing with color, uh, at this point, I, I think all white is classic New England. Farmhouse, you would, I mean, you would see that, uh, uh, from Maine to Connecticut, uh, in backcountry. So. That, that, these are trying to be. You know, obviously some historical reference here, so I think that white is fine. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
I have a comment, Steve. Uh, I actually saw the development from start to finish. I agree with Mike Mueschek. Regarding the color, it doesn't really bother me. The way the color is now, it's fine. Just a landscape design is, is what I'm more concerned about, but I've seen some of the other developers. Uh, all the other developments that the developer did, and to me, it looks. Pretty well compared to the size of a lot that they had to work with, so. Um, I actually liked the way it came out.
Other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Richard?
Um, I do agree that hardy board is a much better, um, product than vinyl siding. Um, I do disagree, however, um, I think that. It looks like a giant iceberg in the middle of the road. And I thought that the idea of painting some of it a different color was good. Although, listening to Mike, I thought the idea of increasing the size of landscaping was. Pretty good as well. Um, so I have no objection, certainly, to changing vinyl to higher, hardy board. And I don't really care about the vertical versus horizontal. As I've admitted many times in the past, I have no taste as far as art and architecture is concerned. But I did think it was, um, kind of startling to see all of that white. So that's my comment.
JJ?
That was Tammy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tammy.
Go ahead, JJ.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, JJ, if you're there to spud in. Um, I'd like to say, one, I'm really glad that these were condominiums and not rentals. Uh, because the Norwalk market has not had any new condominiums in, in a long time, and I think, uh, that is a very positive thing. Um, you know, I don't know, I was not on the planning and zoning or the zoning commission when it was approved. I think it's grossly oversized for the lot, but like hardy plank is an awesome product. It is a really nice upgrade. I'm very much in favor of that. And I think, um, Commissioner Mueschak's idea of larger landscaping will help the neighbors feel a little bit more positive. About it and mitigate the enormity of the size, and I think this project. Should be used as an example of what we might want to very carefully consider. Um, the size of other projects that are going in anywhere in town and how. Big, just how vast they are, especially on small pieces of property. So anyways, I'm in favor of what the applicant is requesting. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think it's interesting that, uh, uh, three members of the commission have brought up this, uh, i- issue of, um. Uh, improving, uh, the, uh, landscaping. Um, and I think it, it probably also goes to the heart of, uh, why this is before us. There was enormous community opposition, uh, to this, uh, project. And so when we see. What might otherwise be considered, uh, minor changes on something that was so controversial. Um, it takes on, um, added weight, it seems to me. Um, and I think that's why it's, uh, before us. And I think the sensitivity to the community that you're all expressing. Uh, through, through the use of enhanced, um, uh, landscaping. Um, uh, suggests that, um, uh, you're on the right track. And, um, I would, um, ask, uh, Attorney Blank. Whether, uh, the, um, owner would be willing to, uh, consider that, uh, recommendation?
Yeah, Tom, if you, and this is if we, if we left it white, would you be willing to, to size up the, the, I think it was. Mr. Mueschek, the, the trees specifically, or we're talking about all of the plantings?
The trees only, the, the shrubs are all, you know, the size, they grow fast. I'm though. It, it would be the trees, which are the important element, the vertical element. That softens the buildings and it'd be one grade up. So if it's a. Two and a half to three-inch caliper, which is the language we use in the landscape industry. That's a diameter at breast height. Uh, if you want to know how, exactly what that means, the diameter of the trunk at breast height. Two and a half to three-inch caliper, it would be, uh, three and a half, uh, to four-inch caliper. It would be the next grade up. So it would be very easy to just look at the sizes and go the next grade up and, you know, the, in the industry standards. Uh, it's not a huge burden, but it actually makes a big difference. It may just be, sound like one or two inches in diameter, but actually the entire tree is bigger. The crown is bigger. The root ball is bigger, that, you know, it, it makes a big difference, actually, um, and, uh. Uh, and so that, that, it would be the trees only, and it would be the. Three river birch, the two winter king hawthorn, the five pin oaks. And the seven red cedars. Those are the trees that are along, uh, Winfield and Howard.
Tom, is that all right? Hope you're on mute. Tommy, Tommy, you're on mute.
My name is Tom Tom Balatay, and I'm the owner of the property. I'd be more than happy and delighted to increase about more than twenty-five percent to thirty percent. In sizes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and we appreciate, we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, do we want to just, uh, uh, approve this with a show of hands? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Please, one, one more comment?
So, sorry, Richard, go ahead.
Um, I think that this is great. And I think that Attorney Blank has indicated that they're, probably their firm. Is doing the condominium documents and that you maintaining these larger trees should be part of the, um. Bylaws of the declaration that is being created because it's not going to be. This developer that owns the property is going to be in association shortly.
I think, um, my, it's my understanding, uh, that any plantings, uh, that go in. Uh, are the responsibility of whoever is the owner, uh, on a going-forward basis. Is that correct?
I, I agree, um, but it's just kind of an interesting situation when the applicant is the developer, but we know that it's going to be transferred to. A condominium association shortly. So I'm just saying that that should be part of. The association's obligation.
I, I actually disagree with that, with all due respect. Uh, I, I, I don't think. You know, it should be something that should be monitored to that scale. The fact that they're willing to, to do that. Um, off, off of this, you know, you know, this call, this talk, I think it'd be left up. You know, to how the, the tree grows and how the property stands. I think it's putting too much of a burden on that, putting the bylaws. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think, I, I, if I can just say, I, I think under the new tree ordinance. That, um, that if you guys approve a tree on a plan. Um, it's required to be maintained in perpetuity and then, and can be enforced through the city. Um, I think it's through the tree ward and not actually through you guys, um, although I think you can probably enforce it anyway on the approval. But, um, there's a whole lot of enforcement mechanisms and a whole lot of neighbors that, that are watching this project, so, um. I'm happy to include it in the association language and the, in the bylaws, um, or, or not, but, but there's, there's a lot of mechanisms to, to ensure that the trees stay.
Well, is this the same tree warden that? Does or doesn't have the authority to tell somebody whether they can cut a tree down or not? I thought we did this conversation already.
Yeah, well, now they do, but, um.
Well, last week, apparently they didn't. But, um, if, Attorney Blank, if you're, um, willing to put that in and it makes no neverminds, then I would really like to see that.
Yeah, that, that's fine, Tom, right?
That's fine.
Okay. Now, can we do it with a raise of hands? Um, all those in favor? Um, looks unanimous.
Oh, wait.
I'm late, Lou. Did you, was there a motion in a second? I was late, I was.
No, there was not a motion in a second. I, I short-cutted it. Um, a motion to, uh, approve?
I make the move.
Okay, Richard, uh, move, Steve, seconds. Um, let's do this again. All those in favor, raise of hands. JJ, uh, can't tell if your hands raised. All right, JJ may be off temporarily. Let's not.
She's in that other meeting, I think.
Yeah, so let's not include her in this vote. But, uh, it's unanimous among those of us who are here. Attorney Blank, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh.
May I say one quick thing?
Sure, go ahead.
I want to say it real quick, uh. That it was on the record, uh, when this was approved by staff that.
I, I heard you. I just couldn't get to it.
Oh, sorry. Well, you didn't get a chance to vote on it, um. But anyway, I just want to say that it was, uh, stated into the record, I'm sure. That, uh, if the, uh, East Norwalk TOD had been, uh. Uh, passed on schedule, this project would not have happened.
That's quite, that's correct.
Because it was delayed, uh, with, from community opposition, it gave the applicant a chance to, uh, get the application in under the wire. And then the city's hands were tied. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that fact is that we wouldn't have had this conversation tonight. If the TOD had been planned on, uh, uh, following the original schedule.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, the final, um, uh, item under review and action on applications. Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one R slash SP slash CAM. BPC Capital Management. Uh, I don't know if that's a one or an I. LLC. Three Park Street Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Article fifty to reduce the minimum lot size. For Historic Preservation Development in conjunction with a proposed eleven-unit Historic Preservation Development. This is a preliminary review, uh, we need to decide whether to move it to, uh, a, a public hearing. Um. Uh, Liz, are you representing the owner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Please.
In light of the hour, we're going, I'm going to keep it very brief for you and as staff. In light of the hour, we're going, I'm going to keep it very brief for you. And as staff had directed when we were discussing placing this matter on tonight's agenda, we'll keep our, it's just a preliminary discussion so that you can become aware of what the applications are all about and what the general concept is for this proposed development. If I may, if Mr. Baker could screen share the architect's rendering elevations, that would be great. In the meantime, on the, this meeting tonight is Brad Craig, Craighead. He is a principal with BPC Capital Management, owner of the property. He also owns another property directly to the south. The property is across from the green, directly south of the First Congregational Church on the Green. It's a lovely example of Italian design, and it is listed in the city's National Register of Historic Places, excuse me, it's listed in the city's historic inventory and the National Register of Historic Places. Notice was submitted to joining property owners and those across the street of the submission of the application on June 29. And as part of the application documents, we submitted three letters of support. One was from the former planning commissioner and adjacent property owner, John Lesko, from the Human Services Council, which owns the property, which was the former Adams River Restaurant at the corner of East and Wall Street, and also from the pastor of the First Congregational Church on the Green. The parcel is about 20,370 square feet. And under the current regulations, it would not be eligible for the Historic Preservation Special Permit Application, which allows traditional density and development of a historic site, provided the, the property has a historic building on it. Right now, the regulation allows for that type of development with properties that are at least 30,000 square feet in size. And that number came about in connection with the development of a site around the corner on East Wall Street, which is currently under construction. So just as a general proposition, my client would like to certainly keep the beautiful Styles Curtis House, which has been in the city's inventory and part of the fabric of the section of Norwalk in the Green since the early 1800s. And to then construct two additional buildings to the rear and to the side of it, you'll see one of them on the side in the image that's before you. The general idea is to then develop it with these three structures to create 10 or 11 units. Keep the main house, the main dwelling, first floor would be office, and it would be a coordinated and congruent development of the site with two new buildings that are complementary in architecture and style to the existing Styles Curtis House. As part of this project, there is a application for text amendment to reduce the size of the lot lots from 30,000 to 20,000. And based upon our initial research, that would be about 10 other lots that might be applicable for this type of development, provided they have a historic structure on that, those properties. There is a special permit application. And then there is also a coastal area management application because the property is within the boundary of the coastal CAM zone. So that's generally what we're proposing. Some of the city agencies have already reviewed the proposal and issued their sign offs, and those include the First District Water Department and the Health Department. The histor, the Harbor Management Commission is scheduled to review the text amendment at the end of July. We haven't heard yet from Public Works or Fire or WPCA or TMP, but I suspect that those comments will be coming in shortly. And we will certainly respond to them as they come in. And lastly, staff has provided us with some comments to which we responded today. So I, I would just like to have you start thinking about the project, drive by it, consider what's there, consider what's around the corner. And when you're driving by, perhaps bring this rendering with you so you can visualize what Mr. Craighead is contemplating for the development of this property. That's about it for tonight. And considering you have such a long agenda still ahead of you, we're happy to answer any questions, but we'll see whenever the next meeting is scheduled for further review. And then clearly there will be public hearings necessary for the text amendment and special permit. I'll be ready to address any questions you have. And the project architects and civil engineer and traffic consultant will all be present for whatever meetings you desire their presence.
Attorney Sachi, you know, I know that this may not be fully designed yet. But there are three rather large handsome trees on this property. I would like to encourage, as this goes forward, the maintenance and saving of those trees.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. As a matter of fact, that was a comment that staff raised. Those trees are on the city right of way, but my client has every intention to keep them. As a matter of fact, there is an existing sidewalk that was recently installed by the Department of Public Works, and it kind of meanders around those trees so as to protect the roots as best that DPW could. But our, our concept would be to keep the trees. They're lovely and they add quite a nice addition visually and shade and, and in other ways to the site.
Thank you. Other questions for Attorney Sachi?
Yes, Steve here. How you doing, Attorney Sachi? The development, are you familiar with the development on East Wall?
Yes, sir.
One? I have been around that area for a while, and I'll be comparing both of those developments.
I think you'll see this is, is very sensitive to the existing structure and the others that are around it. And I think that's also demonstrated by the level of support already received from the neighbors who directly abut this property. Mr. Craighead has taken great pains to make sure that whatever he proposes to do is contextually appropriate and sensitive to the neighborhood. And I think he's, he's done a great job in achieving that. But we'll go through those, all the plans and the design and the, the, how we came to the design that is before you at the next meeting. And happy to answer any questions, but I welcome your interest and I ask you to drive by, walk by and, and bring this plan with you to see what we propose and how it would look.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, Brian, next step.
Yeah, so, so Liz has a couple other commissions to go to. She has to go to Harbor and then Historical. And we also have our Village District Review. So we're probably looking at some point, hopefully in August, to get this to a public hearing.
Okay.
We'll work with staff in, in terms of timing and scheduling with our consultants' availability, my client's availability, and also the other agencies from whom we need approvals.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. It's 8:02. Let me ask, would you like to take a 10-minute break now? That way we can start and go straight through Wegmans instead of breaking up the Wegmans presentation? So I think, I think everybody's nodding and saying yes.
Thank you.
It's 8:02. We'll get back together at 8:12. Think we can. So, public hearing 2022-19R/SP/SPR Wegmans Food Markets, Inc., 47 Richards Avenue and 677, 667 and 651 Connecticut Avenue. Zoning Text Amendment, Special Permit and Site Plan Review Applications for a Wegmans Grocery Store Parking Structure and Two Retail Buildings. Although this is a public hearing, Brian, I'm going to ask you, since we are not going to have all of the information to go through this evening, do we allow a public comment this evening? Or do we allow it at the final part of the hearing?
So I guess it kind of depends on where Mr. Hennessy ends up with his, with his presentation and kind of the, the hour. I think pending the, the traffic peer review is where most of the comments will come from. So I guess we can kind of play it by ear, but it might be good to have the public that's here have a chance to speak.
Okay. Then I will explain how these public hearings operate. The public hearing begins with the developer making a presentation regarding what it is they intend to do. Throughout that presentation, the members of the commission are free to ask any questions they have of the presenters. When that presentation is completed, traditionally, we open it up to the public for comment. We ask that those speaking identify themselves with their name and their address. We do not put a time restriction on the public's comments, though we ask that you be as brief as you can while making all of the points that are important to you. If someone has already made a point that you're going to make, rather than remaking the point, we would ask instead that you simply say you agree with what the previous speaker said on that particular matter. We ask that you conduct yourself congenially in a friendly manner. And you're actually speaking to the developer when you're making your comments. You will not get an immediate response to your questions, but please bring them up. Because after all members of the public have had an opportunity to speak, the developer will have another opportunity to speak and to address the questions that have been raised. And again, throughout that entire process, the members of the commission have the right to ask questions of the developer. When that process is completed, typically we close the hearing. This evening is a little bit different because we do not have and will not have this evening all of the traffic materials that we need to assess this project. So the hearing will be held open. And any new material that is presented at the second part of this hearing that is new, we will give members of the public another opportunity to respond to the new material only. And again, this evening, we, we allow the public who are speaking only one opportunity to speak. So make sure that you use that to make all of the points that are important to you. But again, if new material is presented at the second part of this hearing, which will probably be held later this month or in early August, you will have an opportunity to speak on those matters, even though you've spoken this evening. And with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Hennessy, who is representing Wegmans.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the commission members. For the record, my name is William Hennessy. I'm an attorney with the firm's Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy. I practice out of our Stanford office located at 1055 Washington Boulevard. And as you stated, Mr. Chairman, I'm here in connection with the referenced applications 2022-19R SP and SPR, which if approved, will result in Connecticut's first Wegmans Food Market right here in Norwalk at 47 Richards Avenue. Two preliminary matters I'd just like to state for the record. Number one, we have noticed all of the required surrounding property owners via the required postal letter notice, and we've provided your staff for inclusion into the record, evidence of that mailing. And also in the record is evidence of the required newspaper notice that your staff arranged for. The second preliminary thing I'd like to do is introduce to you those members of the development team that are here tonight that will be presenting to you. And they include Steve Levy, project manager from Wegmans, and his colleague Kevin Marin, the permit manager. Kevin's also the architect responsible for the store. Tim Anterco from Langin is here. Tim is the project engineer, the civil engineer. He's responsible for having studied the site, the, the properties, the four, as I'll explain in a second, that comprise the proposed site and designed all of the elements of the site plan, including the site drainage, the engineering, the utilities and so forth. He'll explain all of that to you. And his colleague, John Plant, is also here. John is the traffic engineer from Langin, who prepared the traffic report that's been submitted. And he will give you an overview of the traffic operations, the, the philosophy and theory behind the various points of access. And he will also be able to explain to you what is being further studied by your peer review consultant. As you stated, Mr. Schulman, you and your fellow commissioners chose to retain the services of a traffic peer review consultant. That consultant has done a preliminary review of the submittal that we've made in connection with the original filing in this application. They have asked for some additional information, which recently was all provided to them. I expect that they'll be able to turn around a report to you, although I don't know the exact date, certainly in advance of the next scheduled hearing on this, so that we'll be prepared to close that hearing. The last person to present briefly will be my colleague and partner, Jason Klein, who will briefly explain to you the text changes that have been submitted. What I'd like to do tonight is move quickly, and if I'm moving too quickly, I'm going to ask that you just raise your hand and tell me to slow down or, you know, go back and explain some things in more detail. But the, the primary goals we have tonight is to, A, begin by explaining to you some background on Wegmans and the Wegmans philosophy, what it brings to a community and its ethos going forward in terms of sustainability and social responsibility and so forth. And Mr. Levy and Mr. Marin will be able to do that. And I'll ask them to take the podium, as it were, in just a moment or two. The, the second thing we'd like to do, of course, is explain to you the site plan and the traffic operations, as well as the architecture of the building. And as between Mr. Anterco, Mr. Plant, and Mr. Marin again, they will be able to do that chore. And lastly, Mr. Klein from my office will be able to explain the text. And I would just like to begin before I sit down, as it were, by giving you a little background on the site itself. And I think this will help you gain some context as to what's going on on the site, where the site is and how it's been organized. Right now, the site consists of four different properties, and they're outlined there in both yellow and that more orangey color. Just to give you an idea, the main part of the site is the 9.1 acre so-called MBI site. And to be perfectly candid with you, when I first got involved in this, I, you know, I'd always heard MBI, MBI, MBI. But I wasn't quite sure where it was. And, and then you really have to drive into the site to find it. And that is because it is a one-story building, about 110,000 square feet of floor area tucked, and I say tucked, behind the bowling alley and the office buildings to the west. The grades here are such that the MBI property itself is somewhat lower than the properties along Connecticut Avenue, which produces a great opportunity that Mr. Anterco will explain to you in terms of access to the site. Primarily now, MBI's main entry and accessway is off of Keeler Avenue on the east side of the site. And it is directly across from the newer self-storage warehouse that's located over there. The property is bordered, as you well know, by I-95 to the south and to the backside of the Connecticut Avenue properties to the north. There is also legal access to and from Richards Avenue over a portion of the American Cancer Society property, which borders I-95 and Richards Avenue. That exists right now. Part of this project is also three other properties. The so-called urgent care building property, that's what I think of it as. It's actually six-seven-seven Connecticut Avenue. It's one point four acres. The idea is to purchase that property and building, demolish that building, and build in a better, more legally conforming position, another small retail building. Also, part of this proposed project is the property at six-seven-seven Connecticut Avenue. And that is where the Wells Fargo Bank is right now. And that, that bank is proposed to stay. What comes with that bank is the ability to have a very good access to Connecticut Avenue via an existing traffic signal that is there right now. And then located behind that building is six-fifty-one Connecticut Avenue. That is where Lumber Liquidators and Mr. Shower Door is. And the idea is to remove that building and place, again, another small out retail building. The food market and the associated parking structure will be located generally in the area that the current MBI building is. So the MBI building, as I indicated, is about one hundred and ten thousand square feet. That will be removed, and the new food market will be a little over ninety thousand, nearly ninety-one-six-hundred, ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred square feet. And it will be located in the same general area as the MBI building. The large surface parking field that is currently out there for the MBI building will be largely retained. It'll be reconfigured. And it'll be, there's a proposal to deck it so that there is a two-level parking field in lieu of the one-level parking field. When combined, the site becomes a twelve-point-two-acre site with access to Richards Avenue, Keeler Avenue, and two points of access on Connecticut Avenue, one of which is currently the signalized access directly across from the Walmart. The other buildings, just to give you a little context, that the edge of the site are the backside of the bowling alley, which would be adjacent to the east side of the proposed store and the backside of the Raymour &amp; Flanagan Furniture retailer, which would be up against the parking area for the proposed store. I'll let others describe in more detail what's going on and what the advantages are of this grade change. The only thing I'll leave you with is just to tell you that there is an off-site wetlands that seems to have been created by the construction of I-95. Frankly, it's a drainage ditch that just contains runoff from the highway. But under the state statute, it apparently qualifies as a wetland. It's not on our site, but it is within the regulated setback area of our site. We have been to the Conservation Commission, filed applications. And so what you see before you tonight in the, in terms of the site plan before you contains a site plan that has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission, and there is a wetland permit in hand. So that box has been checked off, and that permit is vested. So just, I offer that for what it's worth. I think with that as background, it's a good time for me to turn this over to Steve Levy from Wegmans to describe Wegmans to you and do so in concert with his colleague Kevin Marin. Steve, do you have the ability to jump on?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thanks for having us again. Some of the material I'm going to go over, I know that you've already seen some of it, but being that this is a public hearing, we wanted to review again what Wegmans Food Markets brings to the community. So this is a very exciting project for all of us, and we can't wait to get started. Our founders, brothers Walter and John Wegmans, started Wegmans from a push cart, a fruit and vegetable push cart in Rochester, New York in nineteen sixteen. Walter joined him a year later. And Robert Wegman assumed leadership of the company until his passing in two thousand and sixteen. We're headquartered in Rochester, New York. We're a family-owned and privately-held business. Danny Wegman is the chairman. It's a family-owned company. Colleen is CEO and president, and Nicole is president of Wegmans brand. We operate stores in a hundred and seven states. We're exciting, are opening in Washington.
Seven stores. Sorry. In, I'm not sure how many states, actually. I'll have to do a quick math.
Stores in seven states. But we are excited. I'll open up our one-hundred-and-eighth store in Washington, DC next Wednesday. So it's a very exciting time getting all of the store prepped and ready to go. We have another store that's going to be opening in Wilmington, Delaware in the fall of this year. So that's an exciting, another exciting opportunity. We employ more than fifty-three thousand people. Annual sales in excess of eleven billion dollars. We have many accolades within the company. One we're especially proud of is this year, we are ranked number three on the Fortune Magazine's one hundred best companies to work for. And we've been ranked on the list every year since it's been published. We're ranked number one on People's Magazine's Companies That Care List. We have a slow growth rate with Wegmans. We open three to four stores a year. Lately, it's been three stores, possibly even two. We receive thousands of requests every year for new stores. We receive hundreds of requests from residents of Connecticut. And we are very happy that the city, this opportunity has presented it to us for the city of Norwalk and look forward to if we can get this project approved moving forward with it. Jobs are a very important part of what we bring to the community. We hire four to five hundred employees with each new store. It's around a hundred and eighty full-time employees. We also have two hundred and fifty-plus part-time employees. So that wouldn't mean high school students, college students, retired folks, people that just don't want to work full-time. It's an equivalent of three hundred and fifty full-time positions. And many of these are career-oriented positions with lots of room for advancement within the company. Values in action every day. I've chosen four here that I'm going to go into a little more detail on. Community giving, feel your best, diversity and inclusion and sustainability. Our mission is helping people live healthier, better lives through exceptional food. Wegmans in the community, and we do get very involved in every community that we're in. Our fifty-three thousand employees live this every day through the support of local community organizations. We're guided by four giving priorities. Feeding the hungry, one of our highest-giving priorities is providing food for people at risk of hunger. Youth and family, as a family-owned company, we're dedicated to help families grow healthy and strong. Education with our Wegmans Employee Scholarship Program. Since nineteen eighty-four, we've assisted our employees in the pursuit of higher education and enriching neighborhoods, from supporting local United Ways to town celebrations and really getting involved in the communities that we're in. So I've broken down the annual giving part a little bit into five categories here. Hunger relief, over twenty-six million pounds of food donated to local food agencies. Customer giving, which is donated by customers in the stores. Education, again, the tuition assistance, over five million dollars to over twenty-five-hundred employees in two thousand and twenty-one. United Way, we're very active and involved in the United Way and all the communities that we're in. Large sum of money and community donations, which is donated in all the community donations and all the communities that we exist. And feel your best. We're helping our customers live healthier, better lives through exceptional food. Diversity and inclusion, very important to Wegmans. We're committed to creating a culture belonging, building, caring, diversity that reflects our communities and makes it a great place to work and shop. Wegmans Sustainability. We believe it's our responsibility to help create a healthier, better planet. And we, our goals are to eliminate waste and reduce our carbon footprint, along with growing organically near our stores. Sourcing near our stores, eliminating waste, reducing plastic packaging, and reducing our carpet footprint are some of our initiatives. Our organic farm, which I'll get into in a second, is a leader in sustainable agriculture and will play a key role to help others as we grow our network in and around the city of Norwalk with different farms so that they can use these practices. This is our great picture of our Wegmans Organic Farm. It's on beautiful Canada Lake. It's unbelievable facility that they have there. And we use the farm's research and development to be, so that we're able to share what we've learned with our growing partners to help them become more sustainable. Sustainability goals in two thousand and twenty-one celebrations. Eliminating waste, which includes increasing the total recycle rate from an already good seventy-six percent to eighty-five percent by the end of two thousand and twenty-two, and actually to ninety-five percent by two thousand and twenty-five. And I have a little video on that. Sustainable packaging, eliminating plastic packaging for our egg cartons and seafood packages and their carbon footprint. And we're converting sixteen trucks to compress natural gas. We're committed to reducing the amount of diesel fuel that our fleet uses. We have a zero-waste initiative at Wegmans. And through our zero-waste initiative, we are striving to eliminate all forms of waste. So I have a little. Let's see here. That little video is not going to work. So we had a quick discussion at the last meeting about solar panels. So we've been doing a deeper dive into solar panels. I just put this quick slide together that shows three store locations with solar panels on at this time. So these were installed in two thousand and sixteen as a trial to see how effective it would be. The store that we're proposing, East Avenue, is the store in Rochester, New York. It's about eighty thousand square feet. And the footprint that we're proposing in the city of Norwalk is about the same amount. We're slightly more than that. We also have a second level. So there's a mezzanine level that brings it to the level of ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred that Bill mentioned. So with the six-hundred-and-fifty-one panels, which basically fills up the whole roof on East Avenue, except for, obviously, we have a lot of rooftop equipment, skylights and things like that, utilities that you have to work around. It creates only four percent of our total energy for the year.
Did you happen to expand that if you did over the top parking garage like we talked about last time?
So we looked at, if we did the entire parking garage, it's, these are just rough numbers, right, that we could possibly get up to ten to fifteen percent if we did the parking garage. So continuing on with our sustainable building design, Kevin is going to go through what we're doing in that area.
Thank you, Steve, and Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kevin Marin, architect with Wegmans Food Markets. Address one, well, work address, one hundred Wegmans Market Street, Rochester, New York. Steve did ask me to come and just share with the group some of the initiatives we're doing relative to building design. Steve touched on operationally goals that we're achieving now through many different avenues. So when it looked at building design, we just kind of categorized some of the overall efforts that we're doing. We look at our water use, our indoor environment, our air quality, healthy buildings, bringing in the right amount of fresh air, filtering that fresh air, selecting wall coverings and finishes that allow that air to stay clean, fresh. Under resources, just a holistic look at sustainability. You know, regional materials, I think you've seen the architectural presentation. These are all regional block metal, steel frame, metal stud cladding materials that are used commonly throughout the Northeast. Recycled content, very high in certainly the metals and rebar, even additionally with our concrete materials. Waste management, we certainly on the operational side, Steve mentioned, you know, zero waste. We're looking at doing that into our construction waste management program that we have, as well as in the demolition of the buildings that are currently on site. And we own and operate all of the buildings that Steve mentioned, a hundred and seven stores. So building lifecycle is important to us. You know, we don't want to be replacing roofs. We don't want to be repainting walls on a regular basis. And selecting materials that give us high value on a lifecycle basis help us and help the environment as well. When we look at energy, you know, as building codes have evolved, you know, the International Energy Code that the state of Connecticut has adopted, all these energy codes have raised the game and pushed the envelope over the years. And we are staying with that and modeling all of our buildings for energy performance, looking at our demand and looking at our equipment. We have been able to introduce LED lighting throughout all of our stores. The, it's been helpful that LED lighting has come a long way in terms of color temperatures. But we're able to use LED lighting in all of our merchandising, track lighting in all of our prepared food departments. So we're proud of that, and it really helps with reducing our energy demand. Under equipment, like I mentioned, we maintain all of our equipment. We're, our water heaters, our chillers, high-efficiency equipment in all those categories. Going down under Energy Star rated, you know, I just listed all these equipment. I know some people think, well, Energy Star rated, you know, that I can get that on my residential equipment. We've been able to find, you know, commercial equipment, food service, commercial equipment that meets the Energy Star ratings. So when we look at not only energy use here, but we're looking at water reduction with our ice makers, our dishwashers, you know, gallons per flight of a load of a dishwasher. So we're proud of those initiatives. And when we look at under project management, it's the commissioning of these things. You know, we, we want to make sure that when we predict demand, when we predict our energy use, that we're actually getting those results and the equipment is performing the way it's designed to. That takes a lot of paperwork. It takes a lot of diagnostic equipment. And we invest in all of that because it pays dividends for us to make sure those variable speed drives are working properly throughout the life of that, of that building performance. And just kind of going down the, under emissions, you know, we, we're a food service company. We have a lot of refrigeration. So we are looking at reducing our refrigerant load primarily. But we're also looking at alternatives. CO2 is used on our low-temperature freezers and walk-ins. Refrigerant leak detection, you might think leaks, do they leak? Well, the green chill program that the EPA created is a guide for our industry. And we And uh, we follow their best practices in monitoring all of our systems to make sure that uh, our leak detection is where it needs to be. And um, we actually use some of our refrigeration heat uh to reclaim uh to use for our domestic hot water loop. Uh, so we're able to use some of that rejection, that, that heat that we reject from our, from our refrigeration load. Um, and site, um, you know, we're, we're, uh, Steve mentioned, we're opening up a store in Wisconsin Avenue uh next week in DC. Um, you know, we're certainly here, we're benefiting from our uh proximity to US one and to um the um metro north. Uh, so we're certainly all interested in opportunities to get um our stores um close to transportation, close to connectivity uh for vehicles and pedestrians. So that's, that's kind of a, an overview of where we are on, on sustainable building design. So.
Yeah, that sounds great, Kevin. Thanks.
Yes, Steve.
Yep. I think uh Steve and Kevin, unless you have more to add, this might be a good time to turn to Tim Mandurko to uh walk us through the uh actual site plan. So the commissioners get a more detailed view of how uh we're combining these four properties to uh function as uh, you know, a very efficient uh, single uh operation. So that's sound like a good idea, Mr. Schulman?
It does.
Timothy.
Good evening to Mandurko Professional Engineer with Langen. Uh, similar to last month, uh Attorney Hennessy did a great job of taking all my uh, my facts and figures on areas and parking numbers and, and building square footages. Uh, so I'll, I'll continue to, to build on some of the background and uh, my colleague, Mr. Plant will also continue to expand on access and, and vehicle circulation. Uh, but I, I, I think Bill did a nice job of, of giving you background on, on the parcels and uh, you know, if we, if we kind of start, we start in a clockwise direction uh on the extreme west side. Uh, that, that's probably kind of the most orderly way to approach this and, and give you some background. So uh, following their cursor here. This is a, a, a full movement driveway that we are proposing to Richards Avenue. This driveway exists today. Um, we are widening it uh to accommodate the full movement of tractor trailers that would serve the market. Uh, there is an existing easement that easement has been amended uh, and renegotiated with the American Cancer Society. And as part of that um widening, we actually have to displace some of the parking spaces that knows into the building. So if you move your cursor to the right, uh, those parking spaces are being relocated uh and will be covered by a parking agreement between the American Cancer Society and Wegmans. So uh, no loss of space, a relocation of them, but by relocating those spaces, we're allowed to uh, kind of widen the driveway, provide a new sidewalk uh heading out to Richards. So, so this driveway, while it will not prohibit uh, customer entrance and exits is really envisioned to be a back of house driveway that would take you into the loading area at the, the back of the store. That loading area is kind of self-contained and screened. Uh, it, it is the back of, you know, the three adjacent offsite buildings. Uh, and has a fairly sizable landscape area that's also serving as an attention basin for us uh, on the south end to screen it from the kind of the main access way that runs parallel to ninety-five. So uh, again, that driveway, western side connection to Richards, full movement in and out, stop sign controlled. Uh, but the, the function from our standpoint is really access to uh the loading area and uh, the American Cancer Society. There really are no, there, there are no customer spaces uh, in, in that half of the site. Customer spaces are really all uh pushed out to the front of the store. So if we, if we go clockwise, we'll, we'll come around, we'll come up Richards, we'll turn around, uh, we'll turn northbound on Connecticut one, and we end up with a new building to replace the existing urgent care. So the existing urgent care building is about seventeen thousand square feet. And today that parcel uh has about uh twenty percent open space. Current zoning regulations require thirty percent, and as part of the redevelopment, we're going to take that up to forty percent. So a significant reduction in impervious uh and, and essentially cut the building footprint in half. So current urgent care building, and if, if you've been in and out of that parking lot, the drive aisles and parking spaces aren't compliant. Uh, they're, they're just kind of there and they fit. This would uh kind of completely redo that and actually flip the driveway. Uh, the right in, right out movement off of Route one, we're going to move it to the eastern property line. Today it is along the western property line and it, it sits immediately adjacent to the entry and exit to the bowling alley. So you kind of have a sea of pavement there with two driveways immediately adjacent to each other with a utility pole kind of stuck in the middle. So as part of the demolition and reconfiguration of that lot, we're able to move that right in, right out movement. Uh, it'll be designed to current Connecticut DOT standards. The, the driveway as it exists today is uh just kind of there and it, it, it works, but it doesn't meet any uh, you know, design standards. It doesn't have an apron. It doesn't have the radii that you'd look for. It doesn't have the signage. So uh, this is an opportunity to clean that up. This driveway uh as you head past the new retail building, would take you past the retail building's parking lot. And you'll begin to transition down the hill. Uh, so as Attorney Hennessy mentioned, uh, Route one sits and it depends on where you are, anywhere from ten to fifteen feet higher than the existing parking lot of MBI. So the, you know, at the, at the new curb cut that we're proposing for the retail building, you're twelve to thirteen feet above the current MBI parking lot. So we, we do need to transition in grade and begin to get down. The, the Wegmans building uh will, will sit a few feet higher than the finished floor of the existing MBI building, but, but only about two or three, not enough to kind of offset that that elevation change that we have from Route one. So as you, as you head in, you'll head past the retail parking and you'll, you'll head, call it down a hill to the front of the market. Um, and, and that would be at grade at the front doors like uh, you know, existing retail in town uh, or in the city that you'd be used to. Uh, the, the front uh drive aisle, it's been coordinated with the fire marshal for fire lane striping. Uh, and then, uh, you know, off of that front drive aisle, you have the various entrance into the market as well as entrances into the ground level plate of the, the parking lot, which actually sits under the parking structure. Um, if we move to the next driveway down Route one, so this would be the signalized entrance that is at the Wells Fargo uh, and Walmart is across the street. This driveway uh similar alignment to what we see at the right in, right out driveway. But instead of transitioning down in grade, it stays flat from Route one and brings you into the upper deck of the parking lot. So that fifteen feet that we were uh, that we were dealing with between Route one and the front door of the market is, you know, a perfect elevation to take uh, someone to an upper deck uh on the parking lot. So that, that's what this driveway serves. This also provides us a signalized access on Route one, uh, which uh, Mr. Plant will discuss why it's so beneficial and, and what it helps us do. Uh, really no modifications to the Wells Fargo site plan. We do have a little bit of curb uh movement, a little bit of restriping to make the lane configuration work. But the Wells Fargo parking lot drive-through building remain unchanged. Uh, as you head past the Wells Fargo building, you head to the lumber liquidators building. That building is also demolished, uh, a new smaller footprint retail building there that is fully compliant with current open space requirements. Uh, and uh, again, just a, a cleanup of existing non-conformities using current design standards for parking dimensions for loading access and, and for access to and from the parking lot from the drive aisle that serves the upper deck of the parking lot. Finally, we'll, we'll head around the corner on Route one, head uh southbound on Keeler. And um, you come to another uh full movement at grade driveway to enter the site on the eastern side. The, this driveway that we're proposing is, is uh, south of where the existing MBI curb cut is. So the curb cut to MBI actually kind of sits in the middle of that frontage along Keeler. We're moving it to the southern boundary to allow us to have room for the various circulating drives that we need to allow traffic to move between the upper and lower uh, levels of parking. Also allows us to create adequate queue length for both left turning and right turning traffic uh onto, to Keeler. So, you know, those are our frontage. The, the parking lot uh again is uh all in. We have uh five hundred and fifty-one spaces proposed uh for the market. And uh, a discussion that we had, uh, and I believe was asked uh, last month was uh, how to, how does the parking ratio that's proposed for the market compare to some of the larger box neighbors that we have both across uh Richards at the Costco building as well as across uh Connecticut Ave at Walmart. Um, and the, the ratios I'll, I'll give are um for the Wegmans project, we're proposing five hundred and fifty-one spaces between the upper deck and, and the ground floor of parking. And we have a, a building with a gross square footage of ninety-one thousand square feet. That gives a ratio of six parking spaces for every one thousand square feet of gross floor area. Now, your regulations are, are unique in that there's deductions for um usable area and back of house can be subtracted for you know, the various calculations of requirement. But uh, a, on a box level gross square footage, the Wegmans provides six spaces for every thousand square feet. Uh, if you go across the street to Costco, they have um, a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of gross floor area, uh, but seven hundred and ten parking spaces. So their ratio is about four point six spaces for every one thousand. So uh, about one and a half spaces less per thousand square feet that we're proposing here. Uh, and if you go across the street, Walmart's ratio is even lower than that. They have a, a square footage and, and this includes the home goods um and the Italian restaurant out in front. Uh, all in, they have a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of retail and have about the same number of parking spaces that we do onsite. They have about five hundred and eighty-two spaces. So that brings their ratio to three point eight spaces for every thousand. So um, and, and I believe uh Steve, in our discussion last month, Steve from Wegmans identified that um, the parking ratio is really a function of the demand that the market has to satisfy their customer demand. But also, as you heard in that employee count, a significant number of these spaces are needed to satisfy the employee parking demand for the market itself uh, and not eat away at the parking spaces that would be used for employees. So we think we've right-sized the parking, the, the plate that we have of the upper deck and its ability to connect to the signal on Route one really works well from a topography standpoint and gives us a ratio that um, Wegmans is comfortable with operating um, this store and, and based on their experience and in various markets. And you saw, you know, they, they have a hundred and seven stores that they operate. They know how uh based on square footage where the numbers need to shake out. So wanted to provide that background. So again, in summary, uh, we're providing six spaces for every one thousand square feet. The Costco provides four point six spaces for every one thousand and Walmart provides three point eight. So if you have a uh, a feeling of how those parking lots feel um relative to the uses, uh, this, this just gives you a, a, a data point to, to work from. Uh, from a, a site plan standpoint, as Attorney Hennessy mentioned, we have been through the uh wetland process. Um, we have uh had our, our stormwater report has been reviewed by DPW. Uh, they came back with a couple of minor comments and, and some pipe runs that they wanted to look at. But uh, on the whole, this is a brand new drainage system. The existing MBI building essentially does not have a drainage system. It has a few pipes. It has a few catch basins. They discharge to, along the southern property line to the Connecticut DOT right away adjacent to ninety-five. Uh, the existing urgent care and existing lumber liquidators both have a couple of small dry wells in their parking lots. But as those are either not maintained or overwhelmed, their water flows overland to the MBI property, which then discharges back to the state land. So as part of this, we've created a, a new underground detention and infiltration system, treatment system for each of the properties. The uh, the two new parcels, uh, new buildings along Route one, both have dedicated underground infiltration systems. The market has uh an underground detention system, infiltration system as well as a two above-ground basins for uh renovation and, and water quality treatment. So uh, we, we included this stormwater management report. We're able to reduce flows to all discharge points, including Route one, including Keeler, including Richards and the state land uh, by, by one, reducing the existing impervious that uh, you know, makes up these parcels as well as the ability to detain and infiltrate those, those runoff volumes prior to discharge. So um, because of our scale and because of our proximity to ninety-five, we will be going through uh, a Connecticut DOT drainage review, which will be a kind of a next step for us. Uh, but we are working with DPW to resolve any of their comments again, which were, were fairly minor. Um, uh, brand new landscape plan, as you could imagine, for something like this. Uh, a hundred new trees, two hundred new shrubs and close to a thousand uh ground cover plantings uh, in the various green spaces that you see on the plan. Uh, new lighting plan. All fixtures are full cutoff, dark sky compliant uh, and their latest LED fixtures. The um, the drive aisles and the loading area are your more typical uh, commercial parking lot fixtures. But the front drive aisle along the front of the market uses pedestrian scale fixtures that are uh on stone bases to, to really give a kind of a main street feel. You'll see some of that in some of the perspectives and renderings um, that Steve will share in a moment. Uh, but we'd be more than happy to answer any other site plan questions. Um, you know, everything is new from a utility standpoint. We're working with the various utility companies. We've done some uh sewer flow monitoring and working with WPCA to identify connection points and capacities of the network. And we'll continue to work with utility providers as we, as we advance this. So uh, again, happy to answer any questions and, and thank you for the time.
You're on.
Steve, you have a question?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for the um, for the presentation. Um, did you go over the loading docks for the trucks? Would you be accessing the site from Richards Avenue or from one of the entry points where the signal light is on Connecticut Avenue or the first entry point? I'm just trying to get my thoughts on where these trucks are going to enter.
From. I, I was going to ask John Plant, our traffic engineer, to speak next. I think John's prepared to cover that.
Sounds good.
Do it in the context of, you know, all the traffic.
I, I was going to say, we have a slide for that. So we'll.
No worries.
Yeah, all right.
And this is probably a good time for uh me to introduce uh Mr. Plant to you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, good evening, everybody. John Plant, a managing principal with Langen, professional engineer. Um, I'm very familiar with this area. Been doing development projects in this corridor for a number of years. Uh, including the Sono collection, which I'm sure we're all very familiar with. So um, just like to briefly talk to you about uh, the traffic, a- as Bill said, the peer review is, is still underway. We have been um, you know, we prepared a comprehensive traffic study um, that's been included in the application that you've seen. And we have been coordinating with town staff and the peer reviewer um, along the way. Uh, sharing ideas, explaining how we approach this. Um, and I, I would say, uh, it, it's fair to say at this point, I think this consensus that the traffic impact study methodology is appropriate to understand the impact of the project that, you know, that we've submitted. And um, they'll be conducting uh more detailed review. And uh, at that time, the next meeting, hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to get into a little more uh detail on, on the traffic. But I just want to give you one overview and it, it goes to what, what Mr. Ferguson had said about access to the site, right? Early stages of this, um, we had been worked, Langen had been working on this site for one of the property owners and adjacent to the site for uh, and then Wegmans came uh, came to the property and um, you know, asked us to look at uh, will a Wegman store work here, right? As, as Steve said, you know, it is incredibly important to Wegmans, their commitment to the community, their customers. To Wegmans, their commitment to the community, their customers. Um, and if it doesn't work, you know, the marching orders. Please let us know it doesn't work and, and we'll find another site. Um, and at the beginning, we told them it didn't work. Alright, the existing MBI site you can see here has two access points, right? One on Keeler and one on Richards. And with the, with the anticipated uh, increase in traffic relating to this use versus the existing use. The existing, it, it would work for Wegmans in and out of the site, but what it wouldn't work for is the roadway infrastructure. Right? Surrounding the site. Um, and, and thus wouldn't work for like Wegmans customers, wouldn't work for the community. So, you know, we were charged with, okay, what can we do? And you, you just got a, a, an explanation of the site plan and the access points from Tim. And, and how that, you know, relates to the current site plan. That was all driven by making sure. The traffic solution would work. You know, so we went from two access points on, you know, one on Richards, one on Keeler. To the next slide, to, to um. Uh, whoever's controlling the slide, we move the next, next slide. We're getting there. Who's, it's who's controlling? Is it Brian or, or Jason?
Yeah.
Jason? You still here? Uh, there we go. There we go. Um, so um, we went to this solution that you just, you know, you just saw for the site plan. Went from two access points to four and, and, and this, this allows for. A more effective distribution of the traffic to and from the site. And it allows that traffic to be taking left turns or right turns at the appropriate locations. Uh, versus, you know, at locations that may not have the capacity for those movements. So what you see here. In, in blue is, is the access points for, for cars, right? We've got the Richards. Uh, Richards driveway, which as Tim said, was reconfigured to be more effective as a, as a, a full movement driveway. Um, for both trucks and in cars. We've got the, uh, another important aspect was touched on, you know. Driveway ma- management along Route One, right? As we know, along Route One, there's a lot of old. Old, old developments that are in place that are see a pavement and you, you really don't know what the driveway is and, and. And what these solutions, and I'll go through them in a moment, um. Provided, you know, was for those traffic solutions. And, and Wegmans, uh, Steve and team. Uh, went out and spent a lot of effort and money to acquire properties and rights. To allow for these accents, access points to come to fruition to serve the site. And, and, you know, those, that investment was the traffic mitigation investment. Um, we see it, you know, when you look at it, it looks like a site plan, but that site plan. Is the mitigation plan for, for much of the traffic impact. So, so that the, at the urgent care driveway. Which is right adjacent to the bowling alley driveway, you know, highway uh, driveway maintenance for shifting, we're actually tearing down a building. To relocate that driveway to be in the right place, in the right configuration, up to current standards. So in addition to acquiring the property, tearing down the building, building a new building. Uh, to allow for that access to be correct and, and work efficiently. We are now tying into the signal at Walmart and, and Connecticut Ave. Um, bringing that driveway all the way onto the deck as Tim mentioned. So all the volume on, on, on the deck, coming into the deck or leaving the deck can go out to a signal. Uh, and which is very important for left turns, obviously, uh, both into the site and exiting the site. And that required tearing down another building, the lumber liquidator building. Because lumber liquidator building was right in the way of that connection. So not only acquiring the rights to that property, but tearing down the building and building a new building, another significant investment to create that connectivity. And then on Keeler, as Tim said, we're shifting that uh, Keeler driveway just uh, slightly south closer to, to, to ninety-five. To better align with um, with the onsite circulation, but also you can see that circular connection. That, that goes up to the deck. So there's a connection between the deck and the at-grade uh, parking and driveway access. And customers can go direct from the deck into the store, into a mezzanine. And then down into the store. So there's, there's elevators. Um, so they, they don't have to. Go down to the at-grade parking. They can connect directly to the store. So they don't have to cross in front of the drive aisle. Uh, there's a little bridge between the parking deck in the mezzanine uh, at the uh, uh, of the grocery store. So a- again, this was um, this was all, all done with significant investment. Um, and effort uh, Steve can attest to uh, to provide, provide a traffic solution. Without having to rebuild Route One, you know, and I, I think we're all, we all, uh, certainly the staff and, and, and. Uh, and we believe that um, Route One doesn't want to be wider, doesn't want to become more of a highway, more lanes, et cetera. And, and this, this solution allows us to distribute the traffic in and out of the site. There will be some increase in volumes for sure. Um, but we can distribute that traffic in a much more effective way. And what we're proposing is some signal timing modifications to several of the signals in this corridor. To, to even optimize uh, and be more efficient. And at the end of the day, and you, you can see it in the report and we'll get into it in more detail. The levels of service that we provide are either maintaining existing levels of service or, or, or are adequate. Uh, levels of service that you would expect. So um, you know. This approach, oh, let me just get back to the truck question that, that um, Stephen mentioned. So the, the. The lines in purple here, magenta here. Um, one of the benefits of a grocery store, you can control where your trucks come and go from. Um, the ability for these trucks to come off ninety-five and either exit north or south of the site. And the intention is to bring them into, well, the in would be coming from the east. Taking a left turn down to Richards and then taking a left turn into the site where the, the truck court. Uh, is isolated behind the building. And then leaving, they'd take a right and could either go left. Uh, to the west or right to the east, depending on, on where they're going. So that, that's one of the benefits. Uh, Wegmans has the ability to control that traffic. There's no reason to, to go under ninety-five and go through neighborhoods. Um, the, it, it, it's not efficient, it's not effective, and they can control it. So um, they will have that. As part of the, the marching orders and, and their program and procedures. So um. It, a, a very efficient moving in and out of the, of, of the facility. So that's just an overview. Um, I think it, it. It shows that, you know, Wegmans did their due diligence and, and invested. Uh, not only in the piece of property that they're building their facility on, but in, in investing in other properties to. Uh, to provide the access that makes this work. And at the end of the day, as I said, Wegmans wants this to work. Uh, both for the community, for the city, but for their customers. And if it doesn't work for them, that, that's a problem. So that's, that's what we were tasked with. To find those solutions. It, it wasn't a cheap solution. As Steve can attest to. But uh, we feel really comfortable that the, this mitigates the traffic uh, impact from this development. And again. Happy to ask any questions, but we'll provide a even more detailed presentation at a later date, once the peer review gets done. Thank you.
Thanks, John. That answers my question. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd last, uh, uh, Kevin, uh, Maron, or a combination of Kevin and Steve Levy to uh, talk about the architecture on the building at this point?
Okay.
Are we hung up here? Yeah, so.
That's what we have now.
That's what we have today. I don't know if you folks have driven out there and taken a look at it, but this is what it is. It's a. Large sea of asphalt parking lot with a hundred and ten thousand square foot building. That's what's out there today. This is a proposal and this is what, what, what I'll call Main Street. So the food market's on the left-hand side. The parking structure is on the right-hand side. We have a, a bridge that would connect the core area. Of the parking structure to, so people, there would also be two elevators in, in the core area of the parking structure. They would go across the bridge. There would be a carter later. So you're entering the, if you were on the parking lot, the, the upper level of the parking deck. You would go into a mezzanine level of the food market, a carter later, if you're familiar with that term, where. You ride on the side, the cart rides in the middle and goes up and down. That would be in the mezz- mezzanine. So that's what moves customers that are in the upper level of. Upper level of the parking deck around. The rest of the customers have their typical main street experience where you just walk across into the front of the food market itself. So what we're trying to create here is a main street. We, we'll put some nice uh, lighting down here, some decorative elements. We'll put some landscaping. Uh, and create a nice safe space for our customers to be able to walk around. So this view here, and this is kind of going back to what um, Bi- Bill and Tim said about the grade change, right? So this would be, if you were coming where the urgent care is today off of Route One, going. Towards the, the proposed food market or the existing MBI uh, building, this is what it would look like. So you're going to go down in grade as you get to the front of the food market. So on the left is the parking structure, on the right is the new food market. Uh, this is in uh, the front elevation of the building. Kevin, do you want to speak to our theming here?
There we go. Okay. Yes, so, so just looking at this, I mean, I, I think it's a kind of a, a form and function building where we're using familiar. Architectural elements to identify the building entry, uh, merchandising areas, seating areas. Um, as Steve mentioned, this, there, there's a bridge. So that bridge is to the right of the Wegman sign that's at the center of the building. Um, and brings you into a mezzanine level. Uh, we've got some plans we can show later. Um, but uh, basic idea is uh, we've got a large building and we're trying to break it down into a more uh, human scale building. Uh, approachable and something where we can um, welcome our customers uh, for whether they're going to eat in with us. Or they're going to shop for their family, uh, welcoming uh, environment, something, some of that men- mentioned safety. We want to be able to get them. Um, uh, in a well-lit campus um, and have a good shopping experience. So uh, that's really what the, the main. Architecture tries to reinforce.
Yep. And then you'll see on the left of this is our signature clock tower, that element and hoopla on top of the uh, core area of the building itself.
And that relates to one of the text change requests.
Yes.
Yep. And it's allowed many of your zones, uh, not allowed in this zone, which is the B1 zone. Uh, we, we propose, as Jason will explain, to allow that via special permit.
So thi- this would be a view from Keeler. As John was talking about, the entrance from Killers on the lower left-hand side. You would come in, you have the opportunity to go straight into the lower level of the parking deck or. Around and go to the upper level of the parking deck. So you have multiple options and, and, and this, at this entrance.
And Steve, I think it's important to, to, to say that this image and view is elevated above the roadway. So when you're on Keeler. You'll be at grade with where the car is. So the view won't be, you know, this is like a bird's eye view.
This is a bird's eye view and multiple, a lot of these uh, views are similar to that. So th- this is a, a overhead view of the uh, the big building on the right-hand side is the uh, existing Raymour and Flanagan building. On the left-hand side is I ninety-five, of course. You, there is a large buffer. There's a lot of trees and vegetation that separates the project. Uh, ninety-five. Um, and you can see the parking deck. And then in the background is the food market itself. So this is a view that, that, so if you were coming from the signal from Route One. By where today the Wells Fargo is and lumber liquider, liquidator shower door building is and going straight to our parking deck. This is, would be our new improved road. You're actually going right at grade, right onto the upper level of this parking deck. So you're going to feel like you're just going into a typical parking field. So we're really. Trying to take advantage of the grade changes. Tim said ten varies between ten and fifteen feet between the existing MBI building and Route One. So this is a view, we're actually going to build a bridge that spans that area and. As you enter, you'll be going right on the upper level of the parking deck. And again, as far as the traffic goes, this provides, provides another alternate access point where. This entrance goes to the upper level, the right in, right out that go, comes from the existing urgent, that goes to the lower level.
I, I assume uh, in this view that you've just chosen uh, not to show a center line. Uh, but in fact, there will be a center line to divide that into the uh, two lanes.
Correct. So, so these were architects doing these views, not engineers.
Hey, hey. I drive.
So, so this is an existing view. This is what you have today out there. And this shows some of the great changes, uh, the bowling alley. And the existing building that's out there right now. And again, th- this is another view as you're coming down, very similar to one of the other views we had. This would be right in, right out off of. Uh, Route One by the existing urgent care building. And this is a uh, proposed floor plan. And we can get into as much detail as you want to on this. It's very conceptual at this point. Uh, I'm not sure how much time you want to spend on it, uh, Chairman. Would, would you like to have a tour or not?
Like, uh, i- if you can, excuse me, if you can, can you blow that up for us and uh, just give us a brief tour? I, I will try to, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd love to talk about our food market, so, but I will be, I will be brief. As uh, as Steve mentioned, our company founded on a fruit and vegetable cart. And uh, that is the uh, center of our store is our, our produce department. If you look at the two boxes, uh, I, I think Jason is driving. Uh, Jason will do a good job, I'm sure, with his arrows uh, to help us. But the two boxes at the uh, bottom of the screen. Those are, those are the entry points. You can enter from either the left or the right of the store, grab your grocery cart. Enter our store in the center and then you're hit with our fresh produce. Um, and then from there. Uh, if you go to the right of the store, that would be kind of a traditional grocery store, uh, categories, frozen foods, dairy. Um, uh, all of your grocery uh, ingredient shopping, I guess, uh, would, would be a good way to term that. And then at the very bot, to the right, right where the hand is, those are all the uh, the checkout lanes. Uh, the green uh. Uh, shading is indicative of customer area. The gray is back of house. And the purple is areas of customer support where our employees work. Uh, so that's so grocery is kind of to the right. Uh, center is produce, uh, leading you back to the, and to the left, to the prepared foods department. So we've got. Um, we've got a bakery department with uh, great breakfast, dessert categories, uh, breads. Uh, we've got uh, sushi, poke. We've got sushi, poke. Uh, we've got pizza. Uh, we've got a great sandwich program with soups and salads to go with those meals. Um, and then, uh, as we, as we go to the back of the store, I guess, I guess, as the further you get into the store, uh, Louis, you know, there's ready to eat product available, there's service product. Um, and as you further go back in the store, then you get ready to cook products. And then you can shop for ingredients, uh, in the various, you know, produce, various departments. So depending on what you're providing for your, for your family, uh, is, is where you're going to be taking yourself through the different categories in, in the food market. But really, we want a lot of, uh, forward-facing employees ready to help our customers with their meal planning, with their ingredients, with their cooking techniques. Uh, on Saturdays and weekends, there's a lot of knowledge-based services, we call it, where people are out there sampling food, pairing, uh, menu magazine, um, uh, dishes with displays and product right in front of you. So that's, that's the basic, uh, method or ba- basic organization of the first floor of the store. Uh, if, a back of house, as, sorry, Jason, I almost had to do that. If you could go back, Jason, just for a second. That right there is, I think, good. That truck court that John mentioned is to the top of the screen. Uh, the, the yellow are representative of trailers. Uh, so to the right is the, um, uh, the non-perishable loading docks. And then to the left are the perishable, uh, loading docks. Uh, we have, um, compactor, we have bailers, uh, everything to support, uh, the business, uh, emergency generator, uh, back in there. All of our infrastructure coming into the building, uh, through that, through that courtyard. So now we can go up, Jason. Thank you. As we mentioned, uh, kind of right at the very center of that, um, uh, plan at the bottom is where the bridge comes in. I think the, uh, we have a number of examples, maybe the closest one, uh, if you've been to our store in Burlington, Mass, which uses that, that has a center bridge over top of the, um, the roadway leading into the green, which is again, employer, customer areas. So this is our cafe. Seating areas, there is escalators, as Steve mentioned, right away, and elevators, of course. But you can, um, any of the categories down below, you can have your meal up here on this area. There's lots of windows uh, out into, well, to the exterior, but also basically a railing and a kind of a glass railing that you can overlook all of the prepared food aisles from above. And then to the right are the purple, that is our employee break room, our human resources department and the area managers offices. So Louis, I hope that's good. That's a brief overview, uh, but I could go on and on about our food markets. Thank you very much.
Okay. Those seats that are on the upper, on the loft in the green area right here will have a clear view of the operations going on down below. So it's a super place to sit and have a bite to eat and enjoy it all, everything that's going on inside the store.
Right.
So these are the, uh, proposed, uh, parking structure elevations. Obviously, they're a little bit small, so I can't go into a lot of detail, but there's a core area inside to be climate controlled, and then there'll be an open area to be able to have people pass right through. The architectural elements and the finishes on this parking garage are going to complement the food market. So we're going to have very similar finishes that, th- this isn't, this is probably a little greater scale than maybe what you've seen from other projects as far as finishes on this parking structure. And again, this is the view that we've already, um, looked at, but it's one of my favorites.
I'll ask, uh, if there's no questions at this point, then I'll ask Jason to just walk through the two, uh, proposed tax amendments, Mr. Scholman.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Jay Klein, uh, Bill's partner here at Carmody Law. The two minor exchanges, but important to realizing this project. Uh, the first one, uh, pick up right where Steve left off, has to do with, uh, the proposed parking structure. It is, I think, back in the mid to late 1990s, the B1 zone was amended to prohibit a parking structure from essentially being located between a street and, uh, and a primary building. Um, the, the history on that regulation, the amendment is limited, but interestingly, that, uh, prohibition was passed, um, not too long after a parking structure was built at a major home improvement store in close proximity to the site that, that we're dealing with, uh, uh, this evening. And certainly, uh, the intent, it seems, was to prevent uh, uh, structures, parking structures being right on a prominent street line or thoroughfare. Uh, as you saw from the presentation materials that Mr. Levy and Mr. Maron put together, our parking structure is, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a totally different animal when compared to a structure that perhaps we've seen in the past. Uh, it's not right on the street. It's in fact 250 feet, uh, setback from the street. There's, uh, really healthy landscaping, as Tim discussed uh, earlier, uh, and, uh, to the extent that you do experience the parking structure facade, uh, the finishes, materials that are employed there are really, uh, complimentary to and similar to those that you'll see on the actual grocery store building itself. So what our text change will do is, uh, uh, allow that type of parking structure subject to two, I think, really important, uh, distinctions. One is that it's set back at least 200 feet from, uh, any street line except for I-95, because I-95 isn't, uh, you know, quite as important as Keeler or CTI or, or in the like. And, and the other important, uh, distinction is that any one of these, a parking structure like this will have to, uh, uh, obtain special permit approval from you, the members of, of this commission. Certainly part of that analysis is, you know, looking at the uh, massing and size of a building, whether the setbacks that building are appropriate, whether there's enough landscaping. We think we, we check all those boxes, but this regulation will make sure, you know, uh, ma- make sure of that. And your careful review will, will make sure of that as well. Uh, the second piece of our, uh, uh, regulation amendment is related to the signature clock tower, uh, as well as the kupola that's, that's on the building, the grocery store building. Um, if the text in red looks familiar, that's because, uh, it's, it's probably very familiar to some of you. Uh, it's language, uh, essentially identical to that found in the Reed Putnam Design District, the Sono Station Design District, the CBD. I think the village, uh, the East Norwalk, uh, Village District. So we, we can't take credit uh, for it really, except for maybe the last, uh, a couple of words in the, in red, which is subject to special permit approval. So again, um, but this is, this is in line with, with, I think, you know, uh, uh, architectural enhancements that you've encouraged in other neighborhoods in the city. But you will retain, uh, a special permit review over these types of enhancement in the B1 zone.
I think that, uh, that concludes our initial presentation, Mr. Scholman. We've missed anything, please tell us. We're, we're all here for questions and answers.
Uh, any other questions from commission members? Before we open it up to the public.
Well, in light of the timing and arguing the public hearing, and it's going to stay open, do you want us to ask questions now? Or do you want us to let the public go and we can ask our questions, um, at a later point in time?
You know, I, I look at the number of, uh, people and I think, uh, we can comfortably handle both. So.
Okay. So then quickly, I would just ask, um, Attorney Hennessy, if you had time to review staff's memo, especially at the end, they had a number of suggestions that I thought were very thoughtful and considered. If you have time to respond to those either now or at a later date, I'd really appreciate that.
And we, we have, uh, you know, I think, uh, Jason, do you have the memo handy? If we pull it out, we'll just run down the list. While we're doing that, I, I know one of the, uh, the, uh, suggestions was we consider what we could do about saving some existing trees. Uh, there aren't very, there, there are trees along the I-95 edge of the property. Most of those, I, I believe, are, are staying. Uh, Tim could talk more specifically about it. There, there are not a lot of trees on the balance of the MBI property, but frankly, a few of them that do exist are rather nice. So we've taken a look at what we can save. And Tim, uh, maybe you can talk to that. I know there's one uh, that you think you can, uh, preserve by making modifications to the the drainage, uh, improvements. But is, let me, let me let you talk to that.
Sure. And, uh, it, it might make sense if I pull up a copy of our grading and drainage plan. If you give me one second here, I'll have that. I can probably actually do it from a site plan. So let me share this and, uh, so, um, we, we did spend some time looking at, and let me know if, uh, that is sharing.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. So, so this is a, a copy of the overall site plan. Uh, Richard's ad entrances is off to my left here. And, uh, you can, you can, depending on how good your screen resolution is, the MBI building is the, uh, the gray line with the 45-degree hatch to it. And, uh, this is a drop-off area for the MBI building. And there are two existing trees that sit within that center island. And if I've got Google in the right place, then from a bird's eye view, they are these two trees here. So are.
We're not seeing Google, Tim.
Oh, you're not seeing Google. Okay. All right. Well, take my word for it. There, there are, uh, there are two, two trees. Uh, I, I'm not quite sure of the species. I believe they're oaks. They're at least, uh, probably two to three feet in diameter. And, um, we looked at what our ability would be to save both of these trees, uh, because of grade adjustment that we have because of the proximity to the building. We, we don't think that this tree is a strong candidate for the, kind of the work that would happen in the area. But we do think that this tree, because of its clearance to the building, because of its separation from the proposed drive aisle, is a good candidate. The one thing that we'll have to work through is this, uh, this solid line with the, the dots is the footprint of our proposed detention basin. What we will have to do is likely kind of play with our shape. We will have to run some additional analysis. So I think if we adjust the shape of our basin, we can end up with the same volume. And then that would allow this tree to remain in its existing condition, uh, and provide, you know, some existing landscape in this area. So, uh, right now, we think that that's where our, our solution is going to fall. As Attorney Hennessy mentioned, all of the trees in between the MBI property and 95 actually exist on the state land. The MBI parking lot today essentially hugs the property line. So, so those trees will remain. And then if I zoom out here, we also have, uh, there's, there's a fairly decent buffer of existing trees along Keeler. We will, we'll have a gap that will be filling in at the existing driveway. We'll have a gap that we open up for the new driveway, but there is quite a good run of, um, area along the frontage where we can be selective in removal. Probably some of the understory or some of the invasives will be eliminated, but we think we'll have the ability to maintain some trees. And we, we do call out some areas for tree protection on our landscape plan. So, um, the, the current thought is that Keeler will have some existing mature vegetation that we can remain. And we, we think there's really a, a very nice two-foot-plus diameter tree that will be able to save, uh, along the entry drive, providing some screening and, and some, uh, some mature growth uh, in the area of the southwest corner of the new building footprint. So, uh, the, that, we'll come back to you next month with a kind of a resolution on this. There, there are some drainage analysis and some drainage modifications we'll have to make to allow that to remain. But I, I think the answer is we'll, we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that was exactly what staff was getting at in there. So I think you're referring to point three of staff's comments, which talks about the entryway and, uh, the pedestrian pathway. I don't know if you just want to bring up the memo and we can go point by point like Attorney Hennessy suggested, or if we want to do something else, because, or I can just read it off to have it in front of me as well, whatever you guys want to do.
I'll leave it to Jason to, to tell us what's easiest. Mr. Cantor, if you have it, I'm perfectly happy to.
There you go. There you go. If we just want to start at the top, do you want to start the first one about the solar over the parking?
Sure. I'll let, Steve, why don't you, you and Kevin speak to this issue? Steve, I think you're muted.
We've been looking at our opportunities for solar out here, looking, um, buying into solar farms and, you know, putting solar panels on the roof and different opportunities are for solar panels on the parking deck. This, comment has one picture here of a target, uh, where it's been done. We were also led to another address that we've been looking at locally there where they actually put, uh, it wasn't linear like this. It was just a section of solar panels that was built over a parking garage. Uh, Jason, what, what was the address of that?
542 West Avenue, I believe.
542 West Avenue. So we've been looking at all of these things and taking them under consideration. The, the, we're really concerned about doing solar panels on, on the parking garage. Uh, you know, we're not in Arizona or California here. We're in Connecticut and we, we have snow and ice and maintenance concerns these, on these parking garages. Our main concern is the safety and security of our customers. By putting these units, whether they're, you know, running along the roads here, or whether you're just essentially building a third level of this parking deck, th- there are safety and security issues for everyone involved. You know, you have ice, you have snow. Uh, these structures are every, going to require additional elements of steel on top of this parking deck also. So there's, there's a number of things that make it really hard to do these solar panels on the parking garage. Another thing is like, as Kevin was showing you, our electrical room, right, where all of this would have to go to, is on the complete backside of our building. So it, you know, and our building is 300 feet away. So there's a significant, uh, difficulty in getting this system tied in. That was just our cursory view of, of solar panels on the parking garage.
Steve, if it's not, uh, practical to do it there, uh, what about the, uh, roof of the building itself?
We'd be open to having a discussion on, on that. But it, and, and I, I kind of listened to your first hearing where you were working around a number and I, I didn't, because I wasn't a part of the previous one, but you were working at 15, 20% in that neighborhood. You, you'd have to understand that on the rooftop of our building, right? We have a lot of, you know, we have refrigeration equipment. A lot of it.
We understand, we understand that.
Highlights.
So why don't, why don't you, why don't you put something together for the roof? Uh, and, uh, share it with the staff and have a conversation with them regarding that.
I would love to.
If you can include your findings on purchasing from solar farms, like you were just mentioning, that'd be interesting as well.
Yeah. So what, what we were told from our one vendor, right? So this isn't gospel. And again, I'm not a solar guy. This is just what I'm being told, is it wasn't available to buy, uh, farmed-out, uh, solar farms in Connecticut right now. But I'm sure that that technology in this, these farms are becoming more readily available everywhere. So that's just the preliminary findings.
That's great.
But the interesting fact is that if, if we, you know, I know every little thing helps towards sustainability. But if we load our roof up with solar panels, you know, we end up with a 4% of our total, uh, power usage of, of, of our, of our building, right? So there, there's not, there's not a lot of bang for your buck on that. There's so many things from a sustainability standpoint that Wegmans. There's so many things from a sustainability standpoint that Wegmans is doing right now. See, we have the ability to really affect these, uh, sustainable, uh, things because of the refrigeration, because of the food waste, because of all, all of the other things that we're able to do with our farming and and limiting truck routes, right, by educating people and buying produce local. There's just so many opportunities that maybe a project like an office or, um, you know, another building might not have that opportunity. But I understand your request.
All right. So let's, let's, uh, at least move forward with your looking at that. You might also look at, uh, the, the, uh, other two buildings you're putting up. Um, just put, put the information together. Excuse me. And, uh, just begin a conversation, uh, with, uh, Stephen and his staff. And we'll take it from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I believe there was also, uh, the memo, uh, but Jason, maybe you could run it down. The EV stations, uh, Steve, why don't you speak to this? Because you, uh, you, uh, retained a consultant to do the study of how many EV stations are really required, which I think may, maybe have helped the staff too, because, you know, and, and, and I can't speak to your staff exactly, Mr. Scholman, but I know in other towns I work in, there's that, there's some uncertainty as to what the right number is. And the right number always seems to be changing in terms of, you know, how much, how, how much you need in terms of EV stations for different kinds of uses as well. So Steve, maybe you could, uh, uh, talk to that. And we have shared some of that information, I believe, Jason, haven't we?
Yes, yeah, Brian has that. And Steve showed it earlier as well, correct?
Yeah. So, you know, the EV, EV charging is an ever-changing thing. It changes every day. And we're saying, we're trying to stay on top of it. And for our customers, we are going to be involved in EV charging stations. The technology, right, between fast charging and regular charging and how you deliver it and does a customer pay for it? Do you give it to a customer? How long are they allowed to park in these parking spaces? We're trying to get our arms around it right now. And we are finding, at this point right now, we're rolling out between two and four EV parking sta- um, stations per store. So I did, and I distributed a report. We've partnered with Volta, uh, to do these studies. They're, they actually are selling charging stations. So they want to sell you as many as they can, of course. And the study that I submitted showed the, um, the one-mile, five-mile, and ten-mile radiuses of how many existing EV charging stations there are in the city of Norwalk. How many EV cars are registered in the city of Norwalk? And the demand at two, five, and ten years moving forward. So wh- what I would propose to do is that we agree to install some EV charging stations and we can work on that number, whatever it is, four, two. You know, it's not, probably not two, it's probably four or five at this point. But we install the infrastructure, the conduits, the circuitry inside of our building so that it can be expanded as the need for it grows.
I think, I think that makes, uh, that makes a lot of sense. Although I think your initial numbers are low, nonetheless, uh, uh, that's a very reasonable way of, uh, of handling future demand.
It may be that the demand changes because the technology changes also, you know. So what we don't want to doing is spending a boatload of money putting in more EV stations that will be used and then have the technology change and have them become obsolete and never used.
The problem is we're proposing five hundred and fifty-one parking spaces, which is, as I just told you at our last meeting, on the, on the minimum side of parking spaces of, of what we would desire out here. And when you start locking up parking spots with EV charging stations that are unoccupied and, but they're labeled EV parking only, you're taking up a portion of your parking. So you need to continue to add additional parking for our customers.
So to one of the other comments, uh, not the next one in line, but can you reduce your parking?
Well, I, 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 it's been mentioned a few times.
Yeah, I think we've answered that, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I think the final one is, uh, uh, adjusting a driveway to accommodate and enhance pedestrian access. I, I don't know if this solution is the solution where we wind up, but we are having discussions about, uh, wh- wh- your, your, your peer review, uh, folks are having discussions uh, about a broader thing than just traffic impact. They're having discussions about mobility and the future of the, uh, Connecticut Avenue corridor. So I think that the answer to this, um, this particular comment will evolve through their, through their further work.
I, I, I would just comment on this quickly from a Wegmans perspective, though. If you could, uh, uh, zoom up a little bit there, yeah. If, if you have a sidewalk on that right-hand side, right, and you go down towards where our project is, and again, don't forget, you're going down, oh, right there, right, where sight, sight distance is going to become an issue. That, that's a sidewalk to nowheres. Because when you get down to the bottom, like where that property line is there, you're going to have to cut over on the other side of the street, or you're going to run right into the parking garage because of the grading right there. So I, I think, and Tim, um, you, maybe you could show a sketch that we want pedestrian connectivity. We, we want this all to work. So we're all on board with it. And we love to work with staff and come up with a solution. But I'm not sure the sidewalk on both sides for that road right there is, is the, is the best solution. Because customers have to come down and then cross across that busy road where grade is dropping. And I'm not sure that's safe.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, uh,
Are you referring to pedestrian customers?
Yes. Yeah.
That, okay, so the, the extension of the parking, I mean, the extension of the sidewalk would lead to the parking garage. Wouldn't that be safety for the pedestrian?
Uh, it, it wouldn't lead to the parking garage. It, it would lead to the wall because, because of the grade right there. It wouldn't lead into the garage. It would lead to a dead end.
Is, is that the same sidewalk that leads to the street, though, at the extension from the street? Or that's just the end of it right there?
It's the end of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I don't think there's a sidewalk proposed there now. I think that's one of the issues. There's only the sidewalk proposed on the opposite side.
Right, right.
Right. So maybe we put a little space in there, create a green space, right? Do something nice, nice walkway through there.
Right. Thank you.
The, the problem is what's not shown in plan view is the fact that it's a hill. So in order to, you know, construct the parking structure, there needs to be a wall to hold the building up and and, but you can't see that in the one-dimensional plan view.
Yeah, we're happy to work with staff to come up with a solution.
Okay. Nick, does that respond, uh, to your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else before we open it up to the public?
I think Richard had a question or a comment or a concern. Richard had a question. He has hand raised. Uh, Lou? No? Okay.
All right. Um, then let's, uh, uh, close this part of the hearing and uh, Brian is gone, so I'll ask Steve to explain. Oh, you are, where, where are you hiding?
Um, Behind City Hall.
Okay. Oh, I see. Uh, would you explain to the public how they, uh, uh, can, uh, uh, give their comments?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, uh, regarding this application, you hit, uh, the raise your hand feature. It's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you'd hit star nine. And then just a reminder to say your name and address for us.
Hi, good evening. My name is Trudy Phillips, and my address is seven Knollwood Road in Norwalk. And thank you for your patience and keeping this open for public comments this hour, first of all. Um, I'm a huge Wegmans fan. Let me start by saying this and would love to have one in Norwalk. But I, the, the site that is proposed is adding to a traffic nightmare that already currently exists. Uh, I think we're all very well aware of the problems on Connecticut Avenue and what currently exists there. Looking at the traffic study, um, I questioned the timing of when it was done over a year ago. And from ten AM to two PM on a Friday, when that doesn't factor in any of our rush hour traffic, it conveniently avoided all of the traffic with the surrounding schools, including Norwalk Community College and the three public schools that exist on Highland Avenue. I appreciate greatly Mr. Plant's comments about the traffic mitigation. What is not addressed in the recommendations are the effects that the outflowing traffic, especially in Richards and Keeler Avenue, is going to have at the intersections and going up and down Flax Hill Road. As we all know, when people are leaving and Connecticut Avenue is backed up, we all go to our traffic navigation apps to find the fastest way out of there. And that's going to take them to those back roads. And then you're looking at the intersections of Keeler, Flax Hill, and Primrose. And then you're looking at the nightmare intersection of Richards and Flax Hill Avenue. And I, I know the recommendation is being made that the tractor trailers will only be exiting Richards Avenue and taking a right and going towards Connecticut Avenue. But what's to stop those tractor trailers to going left on Richards Avenue? And again, going down to Flax Hill. I want to, I would be curious to see which of you would be willing to be on the other side of that tractor trailer going forward. And additionally, I would really urge you a couple of things. One is, unfortunately, this hearing is being held on one of the biggest vacation weeks of the year. So public input is being really limited, especially if you're looking again at the end of July or August to for additional public comment. But I also ask you to talk to those neighbors that were affected when that, um, chicken business was put in, and we were told that it wasn't going to have a huge traffic impact. Talk to those neighbors that live between Rampart and Scribner and ask what the impact was on their neighborhoods before you go forward. So thank you very much for your time, and that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, uh, use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Uh, my name is Ben Han Peter. I live at two six two, uh, East Avenue. And, uh, I'm speaking today to express my opposition to this project in its current form. Uh, while I have no particular issues with Wegmans as a company or how it may compare to other grocery stores, it's my opinion that the city does not need more stores of this size in this location along Route One corridor. Uh, it's no secret that the Route One corridor is the city's dumping ground for all manner of big box stores. And in doing so, the area has failed to achieve a diversity of uses and is not easily accessible by any means other than by car. Because of this, it is one of the most congested and, in my opinion, least enjoyable parts of the city to spend time in. Norwalk should be trying to foster business growth that can more seamlessly integrate with neighborhoods and that can meet residents' day-to-day needs without the need for sitting in traffic and clogging up the roads. Grocery stores are at the top of this list, and most neighborhoods in the city completely lack any sort of grocery store at all. The Route One corridor already has a proliferation of groceries, including the Stop &amp; Shop, the ShopRites, DuLeonard's, and the Trader Joe's and Whole Foods just outside city limits in Darien and Westport, respectively. By continuing to allow businesses and stores to open in this area, the city continues to consolidate and separate land uses, meaning residential versus office space versus retail. Uh, and this creates a city that is poor, less sustainable, less healthy, and less attractive. The site is unfortunately not conducive at all to a store that can integrate into the surrounding area. The property is surrounded by a sea of parking lots and other enormous stores. It is not realistically, uh, realistically accessible to any residential areas. And as to other competing or compelling destinations in its vicinity, setting right up against I ninety-five impedes access to integration further. Without additional housing and other uses, this is not an appropriate site for a grocery store. The applicant calls it a main street, but what kind of main street has only a single store? It would much better serve the community in a denser area with a better mix of homes and workplaces such as Sono, East Norwalk, or Wall Street to provide better access with less traffic. In its proposed location, it will only perpetuate car dependency, which is clearly shown by the applicant's highlighting the large parking ratio as a selling point rather than a drawback. To conclude, the city does not need more grocery stores along the Route One corridor. A smaller-scale Wegmans that can be better integrated into a neighborhood would be a significantly better asset to the city and its residents. In its current location, this proposal shows an unfortunate lack of vision for how we can reinvent the loud, car-dependent, congested, and inaccessible Route One corridor. The approval of this application, as shown, will be a step in the wrong direction. Thank you very much to the commission and the applicant for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Diane Laurecella. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you very much. I live at three oh four Main Avenue, number three fifty-seven, unit three fifty-seven. Uh, tonight, I, uh, have, I, I missed, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the announcement of the hearing record being left open. Is it my understanding that uh, that as new information is created by, for instance, the peer review, that those of us that ha- have not seen that information could then make comment on limited additional info?
E- exactly. Um, when the, uh, peer, uh, review is completed and, uh, released, um, we'll reopen the public hearing, uh, for, uh, comments uh, specifically on the peer review and Wegmans' response, uh, to the peer review.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, for the record, um, I did listen to the presentation tonight and uh, previous presentations and the introduction of this application. Um, while I do know that the MBI property has sat languishing in an important part of the city for many years, I agree with the last speaker that this particular application is not what our plan of conservation and development implied or wanted by loading up yet another large food establishment. Although I know Wegmans are very attractive, they are very, um, oriented towards their customers. I do understand that. It does look nice. But let's face it, this is just another big box on Connecticut Avenue. The Rilling administration and many of you who have been appointed to this commission also heard the intention of this administration not to have additional big-box structures in our city. So one question I would like answered by the applicant is, I'm sure you've done marketing surveys and modeling and studying, what percentage of your new customers will be coming from out of town? And what percentage will be from Norwalk? Norwalk has been like a hole in the donut for all of our suburbs for a very, very long time. I've lived in Norwalk for over thirty years. I believe that this site could be better used for other types of development that fits in B two. Um, I do feel that we have other needs. There are, as, as things evolve. I'd like to know what, whether there will be, what the percentage of local jobs might be. Will, will Wegmans be attempting? I know that they did mention that they, uh, are hoping to be a very good citizen or community advocate. And I'm, if this application goes through, I welcome that. However, what is the potential for local jobs? Um, food donation and food scrap recovery in the back of the house, I'm assuming from, uh, something was mentioned that that is going to happen. Where will, is there enough room for it to happen properly? Um, I'd like to know the exact amount of percentage of impervious surface. We do know, like it was stated, that MBI and its huge parking lot was a huge impervious uh, surface. I know that any kind of new development will improve the polluted runoff, of course. But I do note that there are very few, a scant amount of truly green infrastructure on the property. Unfortunately, the Conservation Commission allows large developments like this to throw in some token rain gardens and ca- almost call it a day. I'm sorry to say. I'd love to know if, if you cannot put in the solar panels on your roof, can you put a green roof to absorb some of this, the, uh, rainwater on that? Can you put a green roof to absorb some of the rainwater on that roof? At the very least, to just. Determine and reduce the amount of heat island effect coming off of your huge roof. Are you willing to paint it white? But I would rather see solar panels on it. Unfortunately, this, this commission still does not. In their form, demand that any new construction of X amount of square footage must have solar panels. Must use solar or some other renewable energy. They allow you to opt. Opt in, but it really should be that you should give us all the reasons why you cannot have it. And the reasons I heard tonight are just, they just don't cut it. Even though they were said in a very civil and calm way. You can move around your refrigeration and even where your electrical box is, if it's important enough to you. Secondly, related to solar, that the reasons I heard for reasons why you could not put solar on your parking garage. Just don't cut it either. So it was mentioned that you spoke with one. Solar company. I suggest that this commission and the staff that are going to sit down behind closed doors and work this out. Makes them go to two or three other companies because I am sure you will find. Companies that in the New England area where there are. Ice storms at times and, and snow, that there are ways to install. Rooftop solar canopies that are very, very safe to the public. So that is not a good excuse either. I'm sorry. Lastly, I just wanted to say that walkability and cycling. Is, is a new way that many people are getting around. And I'm very pleased that our city is asking our developers to include additional sidewalks. Next to, adjacent to and around developments. I hear that, that there will be some mention of this. I did not hear how many bike racks there will be. And any other walkability and bikeability. Of convenience. So we thank you for your time. I, I am sorry to say, I just do not even know why. Why the staff allowed this application to even be submitted because the traffic study was done. During the pandemic, at the wrong time of the day. And lastly, I have, as a citizen expert on traffic, I've been stuck in traffic on Connecticut Avenue. For many, many years, just like some of the other speakers and many of you sitting on this commission. It will only be worse with an additional large big box placed on and near Connecticut Avenue. Please take your time and deliberation. We don't have to take every big box that comes before us. This city deserves better and can have better developments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, raise your hand function bottom of the screen or there's no one dialed in, but so if you want to speak, you can use the raise your hand button. No one is raising their hands, Chairman.
Okay, then we will close the public comment. Portion of the hearing for this evening and we'll turn it back to Attorney Hennessy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to just answer a couple of the comments that have been raised by. The public. First of all, someone who may have been Mrs. Ms. Loricella. Stated this was in the, the B one zone, I mean, the B two zone that made allusions to that in terms of uses that this is. The one zone. Second of all. Ms. Phillips. Noted that this isn't. An inappropriate time for a public hearing in that there's. School vacations. I mean, my observation is twofold. Number one, there's never a perfect time for a public hearing. For somebody, I suppose, but there has never been, it has never, ever, ever. And my decades of experience of this been easier to participate in a public hearing than it is today, where you just basically. Log on to your computer and you can participate from literally anywhere on the globe. With regard to the traffic study, Mr. Plant can explain in better detail or more precision than I can. Why our traffic study was appropriately timed in terms of assembling data. Why the staff and not just your, your staff, but the city staff that. Mr. Travers and Mr. Bala believed it was the right time and just how conservative this is and just by, by virtue of. Illustration, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the traffic study that was submitted assumed. Well, it, it didn't take into account the MBI traffic because MBI wasn't at full work speed. It assumed that there was nothing on the site. So the existing background traffic. I believe wasn't even, you know, calculated in, in terms of the build, no build scenarios. But John, in, in just a moment, I'll ask John to explain that. Mr. Levy can talk in a bit more detail about. Employment opportunities. I, I think he gave us a broad overview at the beginning, but maybe job training. Opportunities as this goes on and Mr. Underco could underscore the. The relative, not the relative, but I would say the dramatic improvement. In terms of site drainage and impervious surface and so forth. On the overall site as compared to what's there now. Make no mistake about it, this is a site that is badly, badly in need of redevelopment. There's not a single building being taken down that's a trophy or conforms to current zoning standards or. Certainly the best management practices in terms of how we treat our environment. And our storm water and clean it as it leaves the site. And everything being proposed by this applicant will dramatically improve that. And bring all the buildings into conformity with the zone and leave none of them as. Legal non-conforming structures. The site will become much safer and the traffic improvements. That will surely come out of the peer review will enhance everybody's experience. But perhaps we should start with Mr. Plant and he could just done, I would say, outgoing into detail here. Explain why this was a conservative study that you conducted and why it was appropriately timed.
Sure, Bill. Thank you. Yeah, when we, we did a lot of data collection. We vetted that data collection out to pre-pandemic volumes. In addition to working with the town staff, we also coordinated with the DOT. As to the correct methodology of the traffic study and they're confirming. The counts were appropriate, where the counts were taken were appropriate, what they represented were appropriate. And we specifically worked with town staff, you know, before we even conducted the study. To make sure we were capturing the appropriate peak hours of this area. And I know it was referenced that we only did some counts on Friday, but. We, there was three peak periods that we analyzed. We analyzed the midday peak period. Which in, in Route one has a lot of traffic on during that period. We analyzed the evening peak hour. Which handles the commuter traffic and any other commercial activity on, in the area. And we, we evaluated Saturday midday, which is also very active, as you can imagine, in a commercial corridor. An active period. So those three periods are represented in the traffic study. And as Bill said, when we did those counts. MBI was essentially not occupied. So there's no volumes related to that in, in the, in the study. You know, if this, if this building was re-tenanted, there'd be, you know, there wouldn't be a. A need to, for any site plan approval or anything like that. And so those volumes could be in the roadway. We haven't, we, as Bill said, conservative, we haven't accounted for that in the study. Taking it as there's no traffic coming out from this existing site. So. You know, our methodology was reviewed and approved by the DOT as the correct methodology. The distribution of traffic, you know, this location is certainly much more ideal than if it was down in. South Norwalk where people would go through the neighborhoods to get to it. There's no reason unless you're in the neighborhoods to get to this site. And certainly south of, of ninety five. And, and so, and, and there was a mention of the trucks. As I mentioned, Wegmans can control their trucks where they go. Going through the residential neighborhoods wouldn't make sense for them to begin with, but they will control them. To make sure they go out Richards and out, in and out from Route one. I think that covered some, an overview of some of the things that, that I heard relating to traffic.
Thank you, John. Tim Underco, can you just refresh our memory about the improvements that will occur? By way of this redevelopment plan?
Sure, I'll quickly highlight some of the items I talked about before, as we, as we ran through the summary. One of the, kind of the biggest things that, that we're, we're making a material change to. Is bringing the three properties into compliance with the current open space standards. So current regulations require that we have a minimum of thirty percent open space on all redevelopment lots in this zone. The, the MBI parcel, I believe, is just, just at compliance today. But the urgent care and lumber liquidators are, you know, essentially probably double the impervious coverage that they'd be permitted. If they were redeveloped or built new today. So one, we're making material change to ground cover with new plantings. And we, we are not incorporating a, a token rain garden. We have substantial infrastructure improvements proposed to handle the flows that are generated on site. The ability to detain and infiltrate, reduce the, the flash of water that would exist today off the MBI parking lot. To the offsite wetlands that exist on the DOT land. And also have a, a number of above ground that they are significantly more than just a rain garden. There's an above ground basin that's planted that provides attenuation and some biological treatment because it's planted. And essentially a brand new stormwater infrastructure from the ground up where. Today, the, the structures are, you know, there's a few catch basins, there's a few pipes. And they get the water off the site as fast as possible. So we, we spent a considerable amount of time with conservation wetlands. You know, reviewing our, our proposal. We, we made adjustments to the site plan. We made adjustments to the current limits of impervious. So the, the current MBI parking lot essentially. You know, cars have their, have their bumper, you know, at the head wall that, that is the start of the, the wetland soils. And we've pulled all that work back and enhanced buffers to the resources. And, and think we're just really making a, a number of significant improvements. So this is, this is above and beyond. Throwing in a, a rain garden and an end island in a parking lot and saying that we're making a material change. So. Again, more than happy to, to go into it deeper. We've got a, close to a five hundred page stormwater report. And, and not only are we making improvements to our properties and handling our runoff, but because we sit. So much lower than the properties that front Route one, we actually take a significant portion of runoff from some adjacent properties. So. You know, the back half of the bowling alley, if you're, you know, familiar with the shape of their roof, their Quonset hut. The back half of that dome pitches to the MBI property. The, the, the only thing downhill of that back half of the building is the MBI lot. So as a, as a. Function of the redevelopment, it's our responsibility to capture. We're not only capturing that water and conveying it, but we're capturing it, infiltrating it, treating it. As we move the water through, through the parcel. So we, we think we're doing a lot from a stormwater management standpoint and. And conservation agreed as we, as we work through that process. And again, we, we still will be under the scrutiny of DOT because this water eventually makes its way to. You know, the right of way of, of Interstate ninety five, they, they have the last say and could certainly. Come back with additional requirements or additional modifications. But they, they certainly won't be less lenient than what we've incorporated so far.
And thank you, Tim. In a macro sense. After it leaves the I ninety five property and after it leaves the next property after that and the next property. Where does the water ultimately wind up? I mean, does it lead to Long Island Sound?
Yeah, it, so it, it passes underneath ninety five through a, a couple of culverts that were installed as part of. The, the ninety five construction. It then heads to the west and eventually it enters. I thought the tributary had a name. It's along the backside of Circle Road. It heads underneath. Little Brook Road and eventually it does make its way. Down to Long Island Sound, but I'm not seeing a tributary name. I'd have to. I'd have to look for it. It, it's a stream that passes through neighborhoods and smaller culverts. It's not a, a major water body. The, it does not discharge the Keeler's Brook. We, we head west whereas Keeler Brooks located to our east. So. Call it an unnamed tributary that kind of dodges through the neighborhoods, eventually underneath the, the train tracks and, and finds its way to the sound.
But the ultimate story here, I'm just.
Is it Five Mile River? Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sure, but I. I thought we were in a tributary just short of it, but I'll, I'll review that and have a, a thorough watershed answer for, for next time.
I, I simply asked the question so that we remind ourselves of why we have these rules and regulations in place at all. To employ best management practices in terms of managing both the volumes discharged and the quality of the water discharge. And it's to keep our waterways and our sensitive areas, including importantly, Long Island Sound, clean and healthier. Steve, could you talk a bit about, remind us about the number of jobs and what, what, what is done to, you know, in terms of job training and that sort of thing to. Ramp up continual Wegmans operation?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I just had one, ten, one quick question. But what is the impervious surface out there today versus when the Wegmans is developed? Do you have that number or am I putting you on the spot?
No, I, I do have the number. It's in our zoning chart. I'd have to go do the math out. I have the percentages kind of highlighted in my notes. So. MBI property today has about thirty two or somewhere between thirty one and thirty two percent. Open space. When we're done, we'll be at thirty one percent on the, the Wegmans parcel. Lumber Liquidators has eleven percent open space. We'll be taking that to thirty two percent. So tripling the, the pervious coverage. The urgent care parcel currently has twenty percent open space. Thirty is the requirement. We'll be taking that to forty two percent. So. Tripling the existing open space or existing pervious surface on the lumber liquidators parcel. And doubling the pervious surface on the urgent care, about, about a wash, call it, between MBI markets, really a, a movement of. Movement of green space, but we're able to provide more parking because we're, we're going to a deck structure and. You're not, you're not generating additional impervious for that second plate of parking. You know, we're, by stacking it, we're able to, to keep the impervious coverage the same, but you know, essentially double the, the quantity of spaces.
Perfect. So as far as the jobs go, it's. Jobs, jobs right now in the hiring process in a new store is one of the biggest challenges that we have. There is four to five hundred new hires at these stores. Very few. Obviously, we bring in some senior management and experienced folks to help open the store and get things moving. But almost all, a lot of the hires are local folks. So getting people in there, interviewing. And hired is a big challenge for us. It's not just the jobs at the food market itself. It's not just the jobs at the food market itself. Excuse me, it's also all of the local farmers and all of the people that we partner with in the area. All the majority of our produce will be bought from local farms, it's a significant investment in those folks in times that. They they can use that, so we'll work with them, so it's not just the jobs at the store, but it's also the local farmers. She also mentioned the food donations and the the food scrapping in our composting program, which is incredible right now. But the food donations and the food banks, your local food banks are gonna love us. We get very involved in everything that's going on, nothing goes into the dumpster. We are engaged in our community and we bring a lot to the table for the food banks. And I'm not, I'm not sure if she was talking about that necessarily, or the. Facility itself in the rear of the store and the ability to handle it, but we have areas that are designated for all of these operations to happen in the back of the store. Because we do things like this is one of the reasons that the back room is, Kevin showed you, is rel- relatively large, if you remember the green area versus the gray area. Um. The one other thing that was mentioned that I could comment on was the bike racks, we certainly want to participate in that. And we will provide bike racks uh in strategic spots along the front of the store. Once we work through the sidewalk and the pedestrian uh connectivity, we can establish where those areas will be.
And and Steve, I I would add on the bike racks, we do have uh a placeholder shown, we're showing three bike racks, we have the detail on our detail sheet. Provides bike parking for somewhere between kind of fifteen and twenty spaces, the just depending on how tight you pack them in. So we we do have them shown, but would certainly kind of work as we finalize the the front of the market, but. Um they are, they are included in the application, they are shown on the site plan, um even if you want to call them a placeholder, they are there already.
You know, the one other uh thing that I heard mentioned was the percentage of out-of-town shoppers, and I know John has. Some of this baked into his traffic plan and stuff, and obviously, we've done all of these studies and. And I can provide more information on that to you then at the next meeting also.
Sure.
I have a question. This is for Steve and or Bill. Um comparing yourself, I know you did your research selecting our time town, I want to thank you for that. How do you compare yourself to Trader Trader Joe's, Apple Shop, ShopRite, Stu Leonard's? You know, Costco, the whole cluster of um Whole Foods, which is right down the street. Oh, yeah, yeah, Whole Foods as well.
Had, you know, Whole Foods is just a few blocks past.
Thanks for adding that, so with these other companies, publicly or private, how do you compare yourself with? Customer service, price, cost, convenience, um accessibility, you name it.
Steve, that seems like in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, absolutely, a- and I'm not gonna disparage any other company or any other program, I can speak to Wegmans, customer service is number one. Right, the the way that we take care of our customers inside the store, outside the store, getting in. You know, on traffic, every aspect, their customer safety, the way that they feel they're in a shopping experience. And then most importantly, what's happening on inside of the store is our is our main focus. Um so we're really excited about that and what what we can bring to the community. What we see in these, you know. Uh these retailers have a tendency to cluster together, right, I mean, that that's a reality in today's world of how this works. What we see is that when Wegmans comes into the market, it's a win-win for everybody. Anybody that is exists there today has to up their game. So their 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 experience has to be better to compete with Wegmans. We don't chase anybody out of business, everybody just, they they spend more money, they upgrade their facilities. And it and it becomes a win-win for the community. It's Steve, did it enter your, was there one more part of your?
Well, you know, in that position, Steve, I I think you answered that perfectly in that position, um I would also uh say that in your research. Um you know, you see the gaps, the weaknesses and the strengths of, not only your competitors, but those in the same industry, those in the same market. Um why choose Norwalk?
Um. I I I'm not sure I'm the right guy to actually answer that, I could provide you the right guy.
Okay.
A real estate guy who actually selected the site and digs deep into all of that stuff, I could come up with some. Something to tell you, but I'm not the right guy to provide that, if you really want that, I can get you that information.
I ask that only because I've been a Wegman customer my whole life and um having the opportunity of. Of you guys looking at Norwalk as and as a strong option, I'm just curious, just based on you all being in that industry, that's all.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Attorney Hennessy, anything else?
Um at this point, sir, I I think we feel like we presented a, you know, a fulsome argument and explanation of the applications. Before you, uh the the one missing link, of course, is, you know, uh you know, finalizing and understanding. And an analysis of the traffic, but we, that's out of our control. Um I think you've sent us away with a little bit of homework. Um and you know, we've taken good notes and we'll uh try to come back to you with answers that uh, you know, satisfactorily address. All of those concerns, uh and we will continue to work with staff in your traffic department on uh. You know, the the traffic aspects of this as well, but I think for tonight, we're comfortable with just, uh you know. Um closing tonight's section and continuing this to a date certain.
Okay, are there any final questions from commission members? All right, if not, uh we will.
May I ask a a favor of of y'all? Um you know, we we would hopefully, uh you know, work hard and 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 like I said. You know, craft solutions to your concerns and also, you know, we maybe we're naive, but we're we're confident that the the traffic analysis. Uh is is going to come out well, w- we would love to be able to close the hearing at at the next session of the public hearing. And and toward that end, and this is the favor I would ask, if, you know, over the next few weeks uh before the next session, you know, your. Questions pop in your head that you think we haven't answered, uh or new issues arise, if you would communicate those to your staff. So we could be prepared to handle them when we come back, that would be massively helpful for us.
Okay, I I don't see why we can't do that.
Thank you.
So we uh will close the hearing for this evening. Um re- reopen uh once uh we have the results and the response. Uh to uh the peer traffic review. Uh and um with just a little bit of luck, um make a determination uh that evening. Uh uh either for or against the project.
Oh, wow, that would be super, I do, I do know, but under Connecticut law, we need to continue to a date certain.
Right.
Otherwise, we we fall into a renotice situation, so.
Uh Steve, uh do you have a recommendation for um the next meeting?
Uh I I don't know the day of when the traffic piece will be wrapped up, so I can't uh. I don't know if it's gonna be in two weeks, I I bet I don't know, I'd have to check with Brian and see what his communications with the traffic consultant have been.
I think based on our conversations, Steve, I think um she's she's narrowing down. Um you know, her her review, she was trying to get something for today, but they just didn't, they didn't have enough time, so. I would think within two weeks, we should be in a good spot.
If, uh Steve, if we need a date certain. And could we tentatively schedule it for August fourth?
Tentatively, we could schedule for anything, I guess, um. I I I have to look what else is on the agenda too, that's the other factor we need to look at is, you know, there's there's other items that. Require attention as well. Steve, um and this is a personal request, because I will be out of the country on August fourth. I'm wondering if we could, uh your next hearing, I think, is the tw- the twentieth. Of of July?
That's correct.
Um and I was schooled by Mr. Clappin that your agenda is very, very busy and you don't have room on that. Um but I'm wondering if we could schedule it, reschedule it to a date certain of July twentieth. To have a discussion uh about what the what the status of the traffic report at that time. And what a realistic date is to expect that we will have received the comments from the peer review. Uh consultant and been able to sit and respond to them. So in other words, create an interim date where we would occupy maybe a minute or two on your agenda. Uh and at the same time, be able to, you know, more have more information at our uh fingertips to schedule, you know, a meaningful day. That's that's fine with me, I I'd like, if 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 a minute and a two or is five minutes or less, then that's. Fair, if we start to get into twenty to thirty minutes, I would have to remember that for the future applications. Well, I I. Point, point made, uh I mean, uh listen, uh I I understand it and uh, you know, I I think it would benefit of this hall. I think in two weeks, we're gonna know what the, what a real, what what a good. Uh date is to continue the hearing to discuss the peer review consultant, I don't think that's. Going to be July twenty to have that conversation, so. Uh if we could, you know, reschedule, uh continue the hearing to July twentieth. Uh with the express provision that uh we don't expect there to be any fulsome conversation, but we will select a a a continued date at that time. I think that might be a good solution.
I think that can work.
All right, Steve, I'd like you to bring your stopwatch to that meeting.
Got it.
Uh Steve and Mr. Chairman, Jay Jay Clown again, that that meeting on the twentieth will be held via Zoom, starting at six PM as well, same as same as this meeting tonight.
Yep.
Great.
And so, great, okay, thank you for the courtesy.
Okay. Thank you, um we'll close out um. Uh uh this part of the meeting and uh continue with the rest of our agenda.
And continue with this hearing till June twentieth at six PM via Zoom.
That's correct.
July twenty.
Uh July.
July.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, folks, we're gonna sign off.
Okay, no problem. And. Um approval of the minutes of uh June twenty-eighth. I have a motion, please. Uh Tammy is moving, is there a second? And Mike is seconding, uh any changes, uh any errors, corrections? If not, all those in favor, just we'll do it with raise of hands. Um any abstentions? No, okay. Approved unanimously. Steve, uh any comments?
No, it's it's late, no, thank you.
Comments of commissioners, anybody wish?
I have one, forgive me, ten se- ten seconds, so Richard can sleep tonight. There is a tree ordinance in Norwalk, it was passed in October, but it only applies to public property. So that it's kind of moot, you know, for private property discussions, uh so that that's why. I was wishy-washy when you asked me that recently, I felt like I gave you bad information, because I said, no.
Thank you, I will be able to sleep.
Yes, I said there's no tree ordinance and then I I knew you couldn't sleep tonight.
Yeah, I remember.
Not knowing, so there it is.
I just remember.
That's for everybody else's benefit as well.
There was a condominium association that ran it, I ran this into fifteen years ago, that's why I recall that. Back and forth with condominium associations in the in the public and private, it's becomes a.
Right, well.
The challenge, you have one neighbor who sees the corner and they would write a letter every single morning, and then it becomes a whole thing and nobody wants to move there. And the place cannot fully evolve, because there's always a stint, a stop, and whatever, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it was a good discussion.
Any other commissioners uh wish to speak?
Yes, what is you, what was everyone's idea about Wegmans?
Um I thought that was, I thought that was an excellent question that you asked, Steve, at the end, like why Norwalk with all the competing stores up and down Route One?
We can't.
We probably should hold off on any conversation.
It's not appropriate, it's not appropriate.
Sorry, yeah, the applicant would have to be here, sorry.
This is just, this was a general discussion, it's not about the actual company itself, just the. Another uh food industry coming to the area, you could look at the conversation as that, does that?
I would probably.
Let's discuss that when uh when when we have to vote on this item. Uh look, you accomplished a a a lot tonight, we moved on um North Seven. Um and um. Uh that was a lot of work for all of us, um and I I I appreciate that. Uh but with that, uh if there are no more comments, I need a motion to adjourn. Mike makes the motion and Hector seconds and I assume everyone a approves, let me just mention. Although it's been mentioned a couple of times, our next meeting uh is uh July twentieth. All right, until then, everybody stay well.
Have a good night.